Good evening to you all and welcome to the Monday, April 8th, 2019, Meeting of the Falls Church City Council. We are delighted you all are here with us this evening. If you would please rise, we've got a special guest who's going to be helping us with the Pledge of Allegiance. That's Ruth Hale Tom. If she would come down and lead us all in the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, you ready? Here's the flag. You ready to go?
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which we stand, one nation, under God, in the Israel, with liberty and justice, for all.
All right, come here. Madam Clerk, will you call roll, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Conley?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Here.
And Mr. Snyder will be late from work.
That's right.
Mr. Z?
Here.
And Mayor Carter?
Here.
Thank you, Council.
All right, do we have a motion regarding the meeting agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the meeting agenda.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Letty Hardy, though, has an amendment she'd like, what, us to be finished by 9:35, is that right?
9:20 is tip-off.
9:20 is tip-off for the EVA game. So, we've got a couple wahoos up here, so we'll do the best we can, but I'm not sure we're going to make it at 9:20 or 9:30. But anyway, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. All right, so we've got some very nice proclamations this evening. We just got through with a very nice ceremony at Cherry Hill Farmhouse for Employee of the Year, and we're going to do a little bit more on that right now, actually. Mr. Shields, did you want to kick things off with the recognition of Carly Aubrey?
Thank you, Mayor Carter, and members of council. Tonight is the night that we recognize and honor our Employee of the Year, and the Employee Review Board is a citizen-led group that is appointed by the city council that does many things, but among their responsibilities is to review the nominees for Employee of the Year. And the Employee Review Board, who is chaired by Mr. Jerry Barrett, who is here, selected Carly Aubrey to be our Employee of the Year this year. And we just had a very nice event, as the mayor noted, at the Cherry Hill Farmhouse to recognize Carly. And we want to now, we have a letter from the Employee Review Board that will lay out some of the reasons why she was chosen, and we'll let that be read, and then a few other comments from there. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Congratulations, Aubrey. Dear Ms. Aubrey, it is with great pleasure and sincere thanks for your creativity and hard work during 2018, though we congratulate you on your selection as 2018 Falls Church City Employee of the Year. Your 2018 work extended far beyond what might be expected of a principal planner and West Falls Church project manager in the Community Planning and Economic Development Services Division. Your broad range of urban planning knowledge and commitment to professionalism was made clear by your success after stepping into the role only months out from city council's scheduled selection of a redevelopment partner. In addition to this significant role, you successfully transitioned your pre-existing workload and continued to process additional redevelopment applications. You demonstrated your depth of experience by seamlessly managing coordination between Fairfax County, Wamata, Virginia Tech, the City of Falls Church, and many others in order to keep the process moving forward. You were an integral part to the completion of rezoning and zoning amendments, coordination of consultants for transportation improvements required by VDOT, and financial analysis throughout the process. The redevelopment of the West Falls Church Project is essential to the long-term success of the City of Falls Church. Residents of the city will directly benefit from your hard work because not only will this project help offset the cost of the city's new high school campus, but it also will raise the city's profile even higher with the exciting addition of a vibrant shopping, corporate, and residential neighborhood in such close proximity to the West Falls Church Metro Station. As a planning director, Paul Stoddard wrote in your nomination, "You're clearly identified as the lead staff member on this project. Your personal contributions to virtually every analysis, staff report, and presentation on the West Falls Church Project were imperative to the success and unanimous approval from the city council. On behalf of the Falls Church community, please accept our gratitude for your dedicated work on its behalf and our congratulations on a job well done." Thank you. Congratulations.
Speech, speech.
(Laughter). I'll be brief. Just wanted to say thank you to Paul Stoddard for nominating me, and then thank you to the Employee Review Board for making this selection. As I said earlier, this has been almost 19 years since I've been doing, in the planning field, and this is by far the most challenging project I have worked on. I really like working for the City of Falls Church, the citizens, and also my fellow staff members are some of the most dedicated individuals I've worked with. And this group of nominees, I work with most of them, and they're all very dedicated to what they do, and so I'm just honored to have been recognized this year. So, thank you.
Thank you. You've done an extraordinary job. We greatly appreciate it.
(Applause).
Why don't you come forward, we can get a picture, and maybe your daughter, Scarlett, and your mom would like to come down?
Now, a little bit, there we go, all right.
Although Nyx is the one that's going to be in the papers. (Laughter). All right, congratulations, Nyx. Well deserved.
All right, our next proclamation is a champion for affordable housing advocacy. Mr. Shields, who's going to do the honors for this?
Well, Dana Lewis is going to be here to read the celebration for this, and we also have members of the Housing Commission here.
All right, well, come on down.
Good evening. Dana Lewis with the Housing Program Analyst, and I have Brenda Heffernan, who's the Chair of the Housing Commission, and she is here to give you some words about the award and why we have it, and why we are giving it this year to Julio Idrobo.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. The Sprague Housing Champion Award for Affordable Housing Advocacy was created by the City of Falls Church Housing Commission in honor of the former city resident Steve Sprague, who served as the Chair from 2010 till 2014. Steve was dedicated, and even though I didn't know him, I've heard he was a very kind man who was a tireless advocate for affordable housing issues in the City of Falls Church. So through this award, his memory will live on. The Housing Commission is honored tonight to present the second annual Sprague Housing Champion Award for Affordable Housing to Julio Idrobo. Just a few words about Julio. Mr. Idrobo, or Julio, was a member of the Housing Commission for six years. He served as Chair for four years. And I just want to read an excerpt from his application when he applied to serve on the Housing Commission. He wrote, "My main focus is to serve as a bridge between governments and the community. There is a special interest that moves me to collaborate because my city helped me when I needed it, and now it is my turn to pay that back." Julio is a native of Spain. He grew up in Colombia where he studied law, and he moved to the United States as a refugee in 2002. He soon started his own business, and even though he no longer serves on the Housing Commission, he continues to be a tireless advocate for affordable housing in the city. But what inspires me most about Julio, I have to say, is his perseverance. Being an advocate for affordable housing is challenging work here in the City of Falls Church, and it's Julio's passion and perseverance that inspires us all to keep fighting for this very important cause. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Julio.
Thank you so much. Good evening to all. I love you. I want to thank the Housing Commission for this award. I want to thank you as well, because I know you are a really good advocate to what we were doing in the Housing Commission. I just want to just mention something. I read last week that you are working even in this, providing even some benefits to the seniors as well. I like that I see some changes that are coming to the city. If you're helping seniors, you're helping one part of the population that needs some help. But extending, extending the tax relief for seniors is not the only program that may provide some help. You have to start thinking in different ways to help this community. I just sent an email last week to Lady Hardy explaining that you can even integrate to those people who lives in big houses in the city, sometimes alone, and struggling to pay the taxes. Maybe the possibility of providing a integrated rental unit where they can have an independent unit that they can rent, get some income, providing some opportunities for the people in the city to get more housing, another type of housing, and even providing some more diversity. But this is another thing. Thinking in affordable housing as a program, as a policy, is no longer what you have to start thinking. You have to think that you have a problem, a crisis of affordable housing. If you continue doing what you're doing and expecting different results, that's not going to solve the problem of affordable housing. While we have a 6% of affordability when a new building comes to the city, it's not enough to provide affordable housing. You have to start jumping in in this process to provide in affordable housing. The private sector is not going to be doing and creating affordable housing. You are responsible for creating affordable housing. You have to jump in. I'm not saying that you have to build affordable housing, because that is too socialist. However, however, you can jump as a partner, but you have to have the money to start leveraging some money on some projects. That's what you have to start doing. Find the bankers, find the investors, find the developers, find the nonprofit organization, find the lawyers who can create and build affordable housing projects here in the city. Remember, housing is a business. Housing is a business, and it is a profitable business, and you can jump in. Even in affordable housing, you're going to have profit. If you help and you go that way, it's going to be really good for the city. Thank you so much for this award, and I expect you to, you all tomorrow in the reception that it's going to make for this award tomorrow. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Come on, come on down for a picture. Yeah, let's come down.
Don't run away yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I kind of jumped in here. I should have filled out, you know, one of those wonderful little forms. Anyway, I've had the pleasure of serving as the planning commissioner, a liaison to the Housing Commission for, you know, a long while, while Julio was working, and as you can see, he's very, very passionate, and it's a wonderful thing that we've got people who are willing to keep working and pushing and coming up with some really good ideas. And we're sorry he's no longer with us, and it comes to the point of affordable housing at all levels, which I know you're going to be considering later tonight, but affordable housing on all levels, which is why you don't live here anymore, which is a shame, you know, altogether. But also, I wanted to speak a little bit more about Steve Sprague. I think so often when we give these awards, we, we know, we know, some of us know the names and everything, but a lot of people don't know who that person was, and he's no longer with us. And so I'm going to be just speaking, put on another little hat, speaking for the Citizens for a Better City, and just, I know we made some remarks, so I'm going to kind of skip over some of the other things. But while the Housing Champion Award reflects Steve's manifest contribution in the housing area, we also see the broader context of long and diverse service to the community, including his strong commitment to the Falls Church Education Foundation and long tenure as CBC's treasurer. In all these efforts, Steve was a champion in style, character, and substance. He was always all-in on whatever he was working on and made sure that things got done. He never sought the limelight and was modest almost to a fault. He continuously modeled these and others attributes that made him a true treasure in civic life in Falls Church. And we no longer have him, nor do we have his wonderful wife, Nancy, who was part of our school system and probably would have ended up being Fairfax County Superintendent someday. So we miss them all dearly, and I know that Julio enjoyed working with him, and so I think it's always good to know and remember. And then I also have, again, the notice of the reception tomorrow night, 6:30 to 7:30 in the Winter Hill Apartments Community Room over on South Virginia Avenue, and we'd like to have everybody there to honor Julio. But, good job. Good job.
All right, thank you very much. Why don't you come forward and we'll get a photo? (Applause). All right, ma'am. (Mimicking a door closing). His name is John. She's on the house. Ms. Hardy?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a quick comment. So, it's been my honor as the liaison to the Housing Commission to have served with Julio. I think the fact that we have nearly all members of the Housing Commission here is testament to his leadership and his passion, and so thank you, my friend, for kind of your tireless efforts on advocating for diversity, for affordable housing, our immigrant population, and standing up for the little guy.
Public Safety Telecommunications Week, or Telecommunators Week, and the Vice Mayor's going to do the honors.
Whereas emergencies require, that require police service, wait, I'm going to start over. Emergencies that require police services can occur at any time, and whereas, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers is critical to the protection of life and the preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers depends upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from community members who contact the Falls Church Police Department Emergency Communications Center. And whereas emergency communications technicians further provide a vital link for our police officers by monitoring their activities, providing them with information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas emergency communications technicians are the first and most critical contact that our community members have with emergency services.
Now, therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the week of April 14th through the 20th, 2019, as National Public Safety Telecommunators Week in the City of Falls Church, in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and community members safe. Thank you. Would you all like to say anything? Chief? All right.
Thank you so much, Mayor Tarter, members of the council. I'm Captain Pilar Yulman with the Falls Church City Police Department, and once again, on behalf of Chief Gavin, it's my honor to speak to the dedication and achievements of our emergency communications professionals. Over the past year, I have had the privilege of working in close cooperation with our police dispatchers as we relocated the entirety of our communications function to our remote backup facility as part of the City Hall renovation project. Like any major undertaking, this effort was not without its setbacks, but throughout this transition, our dispatchers displayed commendable adaptability and unwavering commitment to providing uninterrupted communications between the public and our fire, rescue, and police services. Just as firefighters and police officers strive to serve as guardians of the community, we in turn acknowledge with gratitude our guardians, our lifeline, the true first responders, the women and men of our emergency communications unit. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Would you all like to come forward for a photograph? (Applause). All right. We greatly appreciate your fine work for our community. All right, our last proclamation is regarding a cherished member of our community who passed away recently named Frank DeQuilla. Whereas with the passing of Dr. Frank DeQuilla on February 23rd, 2019, Falls Church lost a valuable and accomplished citizen. Frank DeQuilla, a native of Fort Adams, Mississippi, after briefly attending Loyola University, entered the United States Navy and served honorably in the Korean War. Following the war, Dr. DeQuilla graduated from Marquette University Dental School in Milwaukee, Wisconsin. Dr. DeQuilla practiced pediatric dentistry in Falls Church and was well-liked by his young patients for his gentle manner, kindness, and the whimsical touches in his practice that could nearly allow children to forget they were at the dentist. He was an involved member of the community as a parishioner at St. James Catholic Church, a community volunteer, a docent and historical reenactor, and member of the Victorian Society. Dr. DeQuilla, for many years, visited the kindergarten and first-grade classes at Mount Daniel Elementary School during Dental Health Month to teach the students about dental health and ease any fears about going to the dentist. He lived, worshipped, and thrived among a close circle of dear friends and neighbors who appreciated him for his generosity, wit, and delightful neighborhood parties. Dr. DeQuilla's service to his country and contributions to the community are greatly appreciated. Now, therefore, be resolved, the City Council of the City of Falls Church, Virginia recognizes with great admiration and appreciation the contributions of Dr. Frank DeQuilla over the course of his life and career, and offers sincere condolences to his family. I, for one, actually, knew Dr. DeQuilla fairly well. He was actually my dentist when I was a child, and I was clearing out my aunt's house recently, and I actually found a receipt from February 8th, 1973, for $8.50 from a visit to Dr. DeQuilla. And let me just say, he was a great guy, and I don't know if there's some heads nodding in the audience, but, you know, for a kid going to the dentist who needed some dental work done as a child, he was just the greatest. A gentle person, a gentle soul, and a really great guy, you know, who'll be dearly missed. So, anyway, thank you all very much. All right.
I think there are some folks from St. James who would accept the proclamation.
Oh, absolutely, that's wonderful.
And we'll be sending one to his brother in Mississippi as well.
Come on down.
Actually, not from St. James, we're an old family. There's actually two of his dental.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
Come on down.
Two of his dental school colleagues.
Well, come on, come on down then to the microphone.
Yeah.
Come on down. You're welcome to say a few words if you'd like at the microphone. Just press the button and the green light will come on, if you'd like to. Wow. You're welcome to say a few words if you'd like.
Well, Dr. DeQuilla was a number-one dentist, and he was practicing to treat the entire person rather than just a disease. He was a gentle, compassionate person, and that's why he got into children's dentistry. Many of us who were in the military, et cetera, and treating surgery and so forth and so on, he was not that sort. He was, he was just a quiet, compassionate, service-oriented person, and so we miss him. We all miss him. He was a gift to the community.
He taught children to love a dentist. Kids who wanted to go and see Dr. DeQuilla.
At least not fear him, that's for sure. Come on down, and why don't we give you a copy of the proclamation, and we'll get another one for the family, if you'd like.
(Mimicking a door closing).
Oh, really, the patients, wow. Yeah, you ever the dollhouses and the Christmas things?
(Mimicking a peanut butter machine).
Yeah, on the wall, the, 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 the,
Kieran Sharp wrote in support of tax relief with an increased asset limit. Sarah Showes of North Virginia Avenue shared thoughts on real estate tax equity and relief, the real estate assessment process, and the city's strategic plan. And Mr. Idrobo wrote in support of tax relief and other affordable housing options.
All right, thank you much. We're going to now move on to a receipt of public comment, and we've got a pretty good amount of speaker slips. We're welcome to take more. If you would like to speak, we ask that you fill out a speaker slip in the back of the room. When you get to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments to three minutes so we can keep our meeting rolling. Our first speaker is Sharon Scholler. Come on forward. Thanks for being so patient. Followed by David Tax.
No, it was wonderful to see all the proclamations and for you to congratulate all these people who are doing wonderful work. My name is Sharon Scholler. I live at 1006 North Tuckahoe Street in Falls Church, and I'm here on behalf of myself, my husband Edward Salzberg, and our daughter Lauren Salzberg, who, in the month of May, will no longer be residing at 1006 North Tuckahoe Street because she's going to be residing in the Merrill R. Home, group home for individuals with intellectual disabilities on North Washington Street. We're not going to be around for the ribbon-cutting on April 23rd. As I said to a couple of people, at 11:30 that day, we hope to be in the Lazy River at Bonnet Creek Resort in Orlando with Lauren, and she will not be there with you in spirit, but we will be. One of the greatest concerns that parents like us have for a child like Lauren, as you all have concerns for your children as they get older, but for us, it's even more serious because we wonder what will happen to her when we can no longer take care of her and when we are no longer around. And you have all solved that problem for us. Everett told me I had to come tonight because he's already cried in front of you, so now it's my turn. I just want to thank all of the staff members who worked for so many years on this group home, and for all of you for voting unanimously and figuring out a way to make this work when it ran into problems by, you know, donating the property and doing the clawback. I just want to thank you for this because you have given us such happiness and peace of mind, and although it's going to be hard for us to no longer have Lauren living with us, we know that she's a half a mile away, and Everett had tears in his eyes a couple of weeks ago and said, "I don't know what I'm going to do. I put her to bed every night." And I said, "Well, you can walk the half a mile, and you can put her to bed in the new home until that gets old." And until she pushes you away, gives you a little whap. When I was going through Lauren's things last summer, we were doing a renovation of our home, and I was looking through her things and getting rid of them, I found a project that she did in third grade, and you can tell me, I don't know if students still do this, it's a Falls Church project, and they pick a landmark or something in Falls Church, and then they present it to the class. And Lauren was in a Barbie wheelchair, and four or five of her little friends took her around, and they took pictures in front of the landmarks. And I may go over the three minutes just slightly, but I want to read this poem that she channeled to me, and it's called "Falls Church Favorites." "When we're at Aladdin's Lamp, there are such pretty books. I always like to give them pats and sometimes even looks. On a bright and sunny day, this or any spring, you'll find me out at Cherry Hill on the tire swing." For concerts in the summer, on the scrubby grass I'll lie, listening to music and nibbling cherry pie. At Harvest Fair, I'll take some rides on ponies gray or brown. I like to ride around so much, it's hard to get me down. When I'm really thirsty and I need to take a break, we van it to McDonald's where I'll gulp a chocolate shake. I could do ads for Burger King, cheeseburgers are the best. I chew so long and hard on them, I always need a rest. In Falls Church, not the city, at Bentley's, I will eat three huge banana pancakes. Boy, is that a treat. The library is lots of fun with my classmates' tiles. The window in the children's room always gives me smiles. Broadman is a hilly place where we love to walk. My aunt huffed up and down one time, she couldn't even talk. We rock 'em around to our neighborhood and Oakwood Cemetery. Birds and trees and flowers there are just the thing to me." This is, at folks, written 25 years ago. "I love Falls Church in every way because it is my home. I hope to live here always, even when I'm fully grown." And thank you for making that a reality.
Well said. That's what Miller House is all about, so it's our pleasure to be a part of that. Thank you all. Our next speaker is David Tax. Going to be a tough act to follow.
I'm about to turn the mood right upside down. First of all, thanks for the great donut you brought, because I stole a piece on Saturday night.
Oh!
Good evening, my name's David Tax. I own Clarendon's Beach Shack with my sister Rebecca at 130 North Washington Street, and we've been there for about 13 years. Tonight, I'm here to discuss everyone's favorite topic. It's cleaning sewer lines. So exciting. Here's a brief history of the main line under our Washington Street and in front of our restaurants. I say "our" because I thought Gabe and Catherine from the new restaurant were going to be here, but they had a catering gig they had to go to. So, they're here in spirit. The line begins in the front of our inside dining area and proceeds down the hill towards-- that's the dining area right straight in front of the restaurant-- proceeds downhill towards Broad Street onto sewer number 499, that you can see on page six of your packet, the sewer list. For the first five years, Falls Church City maintained and cleaned these lines, and we were responsible for the lateral. The definition of a lateral is coming towards the main line and drops in the main line, and that's something that we did and still do. Around that time, a few years ago, Robert Goff decided that the line in front of our addresses under North Washington Street were our responsibility. I brought this to the city manager's attention, and he deferred to Robert's seemingly subjective decision. Robert's only evidence of proof for this was a map that he produced to us, which is in your packet on page two. And this map is of the Falls Church sewer-- of most of the Falls Church sewer system, but does not show the 75 feet from 499 sewer-- from 499 to us. Now, in the bottom-right corner, Letty and Ross might be able to read that writing down there at the bottom of the Ross, on the bottom of the thing, in the ridiculously small print, but for the rest of us, I'll read it aloud. "The information contained on this page is not in capital letters to be construed or used as legal description. The City of Falls Church does not provide any guarantee of accuracy or completeness regarding the map of information." Not exactly concrete evidence. "Since the line has been clogged on busy nights and caused much business loss for us and both sets of our GIA's owners, I decided to perform prophylactic biannual cleanings of the sewer, the same thing that the city does in every other line in the city except for our 75 feet, is a hydrojet of the lines. They do it every three months, I do it every six because we only have two businesses going in there." Since I've-- the cost that we pay, as both of our restaurants, is $3,000 a year, $1,500 in occurrence. Prior to making this choice, when the drain backed up, we would still have to do it, and the backup would come down, the clog would come down, and then I would call the city to come out and take it from sewer top 499, manhole 499, down to the huge main line by Sizzler's. The last time Robert and a crew of four others had to come out, around midnight, and spend about three hours, and that can't be really that cheap. For reference, it takes-- because I've seen it, the first five years we were there, approximately nine minutes for the city's cleaning crew to perform the maintenance tasks of that line. According to City Code Rule 42171, I'm not even really supposed to go into that manhole, but now I'm supposed to because I have to clean that up. I've included a letter on page one of your packet from James Smith, master plumber, who's concluded, after a camera inspection review of the facts, our responsibility ends when our lateral dumps into the main at the end of each stem, and the municipality should assume the responsibility from there. He's available for contact if you need. On page five-- I'm almost done. On page five, the red and blue map obtained by the City Map Department, which is awesome, you can clearly see our piece noted. Everything noted on that page is maintained by the city except for that 75 feet in front of our building. Just a quick reminder, Clarendon's, in 2018, paid Tom Clinton $93,119,32, and in addition to that, we paid a water and sewer of $15,120.70. I don't think that a nine-minute sewer jet is asking too much for-- in front of the restaurant. So, I'm not really sure where this process goes from here. I also read in the City Code that there's some sort of sewage five-person board that I've never really heard of, but if there's something, if that's where I have to go, then that would be my next step, and I'd be happy to do that. But I'd like for someone to look into these things, and there's a lot more that I can answer any more questions, I just didn't feel like writing it, and I thought it was five minutes, not three. And--
I think we got the gist.
You got the gist of it?
If you can, why don't you take a look into this and report back to the council. All right, thank you much.
Excellent.
All right, let's keep going.
Let's keep going with one thing. Beach Fest is May 5th.
All right, let's get this planned. Mr. Yerkey, David, come on down. Budget, all right? Our next speaker is Philip Ziegler and Lauren Pincus. Welcome.
Mayor Charter, members of the City Council, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name is Philip Ziegler. This is my wife Lauren Pincus. We reside at 205 Brook Drive, right on the corner of Hillwood Avenue and Brook Drive. We wanted to follow up on a letter that our representatives submitted to the council last week outlining some issues that we've had, oddly enough, about stormwater management. We have purchased our home in 2012, and since then have flooded in our basement six times, and it's all been directly related to overflowing of the stormwater management system on Hillwood Avenue. So, the water comes off of Hillwood Avenue, down our driveway, and into our basement. We've taken a number of steps to remediate the water issues on our property, and we're left with now filling in our driveway and closing off our garage because there's no other way to guarantee that we won't flood in our basement. We've had several experts give us this opinion, and as of two hours ago, the city's own stormwater management engineer, Alan Dalton, gave me the same opinion when we met with him before coming to this meeting. So, we're obviously going to incur significant costs to remediate these issues permanently, and we're asking that the city provide financial assistance to that effort. We have done some investigation to determine that there is a state or a Commonwealth fund that is available, the Stormwater Local Assistance Fund, that could help offset some of these costs. We're asking the city to look into that, to see if that's a possibility. We would also encourage the city to establish a local stormwater management fund, as allowed by the Commonwealth General Assembly and just passed about a month ago. We feel that, given all of the stormwater management issues within the city, this might be a prudent step to probably help us, but also help other members of the community experiencing the same problems. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry for your difficulties. Mr. Shields, I don't know if you have any comment at this point, or would you like to get back to us with some thoughts on this matter?
I would just say, I appreciate the correspondence, and the State Local Assistance Fund, it is our understanding that that has changed just this year. It was traditionally a funding source to help localities deal with state mandates on water quality, but it is our understanding that there may have been a change in the policy, and so that would make projects for flooding eligible for this fund. So, we will look into that. I'm glad that Mr. Dalton spoke with you today.
Yes, thank you.
And we'll continue our dialogue with you on this, and we'll look into the suggestions you've made.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks very much. Maybe you could report back to us, Mr. Shields, on your discussions. All right, our next speaker is Alyssa Lasage. Did I get you right?
Alyssa Lasage, yeah.
Yeah, great.
So, I just wanted to take a little bit of your time to talk-- I would like the city to try to consider instituting ranked choice voting for our elections. Some of the benefits are, it restores majority rule. Ranked choice voting ensures that candidates with the most votes and the broadest support win, so voters actually get what they want. And candidates who are opposed by a majority of voters could never win in a ranked choice voting election. It eliminates vote-splitting. Ranked choice voting gives you the freedom to vote for the candidate you like best without worrying that you're helping to elect the candidate you like least, and you never have to vote for the lesser of two evils when there's another candidate you really like. It's more voice for voters. Your voice matters more with a ranked ballot. You never feel like your vote is wasted. If your favorite candidate doesn't win, your vote counts for the candidate you ranked second, or third, or however else it goes. It makes more choice for voters. Ranked choice voting levels the playing field for all candidates and encourages candidates to take their case directly to the voters and focus on the issues. And lastly, it's been proven to reduce incentives for negative campaigning. Candidates are encouraged to seek second-choice rankings from voters who favor its candidate as somebody else. So, you're less likely to rank as your second choice a candidate who has issued personal attacks against your favorite candidate. So, it's proven due to all those things in Ireland, and it worked in Maine this past election, and I think the city could be really forward-leaning with it. And that's it.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. All right, our last speaker is Sean Van Stein. Sean, come on down.
Hello, practically all of you. How have you been? Last time I was here was the gun violence. Hello, Celeste, I don't know you. I just introduced myself. Yeah, I'm supporting the option three tax relief. I'm saying that not only for financial reasons in my case, also, I'm in my 76th year now. I've been in the City of Falls Church for, oof, 35, something like that. I've got to know a lot of people. Also, my position with Falls Church Arts, I'm always meeting people. So, I know I'm in their age, right? We grew up together here in the city. I know how they're feeling. I know what they have, I know what they don't have. So, it definitely would be helpful. I just briefly want to read this because I know I've got the three minutes. Last time I was here, Dave Snyder gave me some of his time. "I first moved to Falls Church from England in December 1974 and lived at 2428 Cameron Road Falls Church in a historic barn where George Washington and George Mason stabled their horses when they came to worship at the Falls Church. Unfortunately, the barn burnt down on the first day of the bison-tendril year. I've done one for each of you because it's history, which maybe you're not aware of. Forcing my departure from Falls Church City, I lived in Fairfax for eight years after that until I was able to return to Falls Church in 1984, when I bought our current home at 406 Lincoln Avenue. My son, Simon Van Stein, who you also know probably pretty well, he was five years old at the time, we wanted him to attend the city schools. My wife had already enrolled him in Fairfax. I went along there, yanked him out of there, and I'm glad I did because he's been very successful, even though he's had a bit of an unorthodox upbringing, if you know what I mean." Okay. "Owning the house at 406 Lincoln Avenue, we were fortunate enough to be able to buy the adjoining property at 408 Lincoln Avenue in 1993. There's also a picture of this building, the Adobe House. In so doing, we were able to prevent the demolition of historic structures, which unfortunately there aren't many in, well, America as a whole, because money counts and stuff gets lost. The demolition of historic structures on the property, namely the barn where Simon got married, which you all know, and the Adobe House at the back of the lot. With both my wife and I now retired, the yearly tax bill is quite onerous. While the real estate tax rate has not gone up this year, I think, the assessed value relentlessly rises each year with the resulting increase in the actual monies due. Today, some 35 years after the initial purchase, we find ourselves paying out over $22,000 a year in property tax to Falls Church City. I strongly support the interest-free deferment and/or forgiveness of real estate taxes as outlined in Option Three Tax Relief Plan." And that's it. Thanks for putting up with me one more time.
All right, thanks much. We appreciate it. All right, that's the last speaker I have on the speaker slip pile here. If anyone else would like to speak, you're certainly welcome to. If not, we're going to move on to--
"Owning the house at 406 Lincoln Avenue, we were fortunate enough to be able to buy the adjoining property at 408 Lincoln Avenue in 1993. There's also a picture of this building, the Adobe House. In so doing, we were able to prevent the demolition of historic structures, which unfortunately there aren't many in, well, America as a whole, because money counts and stuff gets lost. Demolition of historic structures on the property, namely the barn where Simon got married, which you all know, and the Adobe House at the back of the lot. With both my wife and I now retired, the yearly tax bill is quite onerous. While the real estate tax rate has not gone up this year, I think, the assessed value relentlessly rises each year with the resulting increase in the actual monies due. Today, some 35 years after the initial purchase, we find ourselves paying out over $22,000 a year in property tax to Falls Church City. I strongly support the interest-free deferment and/or forgiveness of real estate taxes as outlined in Option Three Tax Relief Plan. And that's it. Thanks for putting up with me one more time."
All right, thanks much. We appreciate it. All right, that's the last speaker I have on the speaker slip pile here. If anyone else would like to speak, you're certainly welcome to. If not, we're going to move on to, what do we got next here? Looks like the Aurora House Annual Report. So come on down, let's hear it.
I'd like to introduce, this is Julia Peterson, and she is the Chair of the Aurora House Citizens' Advisory Committee, and she has a report to give to you all.
Welcome.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you. It's a little over a year since I was here last. I think you all have a packet that tells you a little bit about the mission of the Independent Living Program. When I was here last January, Aurora House was encouraged to report that we'd been evaluated for the Independent Living Program, and had been verbally advised that we'd be receiving documentation indicating approval. At issue had been providing for those in need based upon the previous license. They had to leave at 18 years of old. Aurora House sought to provide a continuum of care because these young women are not necessarily ready at 17 and 18 years of age to jump off the cliff and take care of themselves. Okay, Aurora House had been challenged in maintaining full facility utilization. Over the last five to seven years, the philosophy of care to young women had evolved. Aurora House has a 30-year history of providing care to troubled young women and their families so these girls could mature into productive members of society. Thirty years ago, juvenile delinquency, promiscuity, theft, and truancy were typical behaviors of troubled teens. Over time, the symptoms have evolved to include substance abuse, domestic violence, school violence, and it is now well-recognized that the child is part of a family system that may need to be reset. Thirty years ago, girls came to Aurora House for a year or more at a time. Now they arrive for a few months. Maintaining utilization is challenging. The short time of enrollment requires the highly skilled staff at Aurora House hit the ground running and execute a finely tuned program in very short order, graduating young women who are focused on becoming meaningful members of society. Over 70% of our graduates go directly to college. The Independent Living Program provides young women ages 16 to 20 with skills necessary to become independent. On February 12, 2018, Aurora House's Independent Living Program received its license from the Department of Juvenile Justice. The Aurora House Girls residency facility license was modified to accept residents into the ILT program through ages 20, and those residents would be included in the house's rating capacity of 12 full-timers. A requirement was that the ILP girls would need to live separately from the younger residents. They're typically facing different challenges than residential house residents. Aurora House is able to maintain separate living arrangements and did not need to make structural changes to the facility to accommodate the dual programs. The ILT program is now located on the first floor in what was previously two councilors' offices. Those two apartments share a hall bathroom. The councilors' offices were moved upstairs. The first resident initiated the ILP program on April 2 in 2018. It's just a year ago. Since that time, Aurora House has overseen the living and maturation of six ILP residents. At this time, four have been successful in the program, having maintained full-time employment and set up their own home. One has transitioned to a more intensive substance abuse program elsewhere. There continues to be sustained demand for spaces in our Independent Living Program from all jurisdictions, Falls Church, Arlington, Alexandria, and Fairfax. Rachel Kendall and Nancy Vincent continue to mature the ILP Independent Living Program in meeting the needs of the population. This past January, a new contract was signed with Evidence-Based Associates that funds residents stepping down from the Department of Juvenile Justice. The first applicant came through the EBA program in January 2019. As a result of addressing the changing needs of girls and young women in need, Aurora House utilization has climbed from 43% in January 2018 to 61% in January 2019. So we're very happy with that change. Okay, one other thing I want to speak to is that we're very thankful for the commitment and experience of our long-term individual representatives. Over these last five years, when juvenile justice was changing the way they account for girls in the programs, had been year, year and a half or more placement now, three or four months, during this same five-year period, Aurora House had to respond to its maturation. Based on life challenges, each of the original members have stepped down, and Aurora House is represented by a second generation of committed individuals. Former group home manager Donna Ahart retired in 2015, and she is succeeded by Rachel Kendall in 2017. Leah Purzel retired in 2014 with 30 years of service. I joined the CAC in 2014. Linda Nebergel retired in 2016 after 24 years of service. Christina Goodman joined in 2015. Miriam Gagga joined in 2017. Jamie French stepped down in 2017 after 18 years of service. Devanchi Patel joined in 2018. And just two weeks ago, Judy Wheat, a 30-year representative, stepped down as she accepted a judgeship in Arlington County in March, and solicitations have been made for a replacement. So I just wanted to let you know where we are.
You've been busy, haven't you?
We're busy, we're flexible, we're really happy with the program. It's been challenging. We've had to evolve to legislation and to just humanity.
Thank you for the great work you do.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could I just, yeah.
Before you go, Julia, I just, as the liaison to Aurora House Advisory Committee, I'm always really impressed with the dedication that the members of the committee have to the House and how they bring their own personal expertise to be able to advise. And I'm also so impressed with the staff who have made these changes over the last few years, because there was a time when the program was in jeopardy of continuing, and you all encouraged and knew that there was a need for a program for young women, and persisted and made sure that we maintained a program, and now it fits what the needs are of teenagers now. So I applaud you for that, and thank you for your work. Thank you.
Mr. Duncan?
Second that motion. Thank you for the important work you do. The 14 life skills that you delineate here in the report, if I could achieve even half those, I feel like I'd be a competent adult. So thank you for all the work that you do. Just, you're mentioning that the building itself is 30 years old. Calls me to remind, number one, I can't believe it's been that long since we fought the battle to get the home built, but number two, is the building itself, you know, in okay shape? Maybe the next time we report, we could get a little something on where are the systems and so forth of the building themselves, the building itself is.
Yes, I know that this was brought up last year. I went back and asked them, you know, are there serious challenges here? I'll ask again. I'm happy to. All right.
You know, oftentimes we'll hear that buildings have, some part of the building has reached the end of its life, and, you know, it has to be replaced, so I assume that after 30 years, there have probably been some changes that have been made, but maybe there's things coming down the road that we should just be prepared for. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I may, Mayor, I would note under the CIP for the facility reinvestment, Aurora House is one of the facilities that Robert Goff and the team does look at. We have had to do recently roof replacements, look at HVAC, and the one thing that we are looking into is ADA accessibility to the second floor because that does not exist.
All right, thank you much. Okay, let's keep moving. So our next item is council requests. Are there any council requests? Vice Mayor Connolly.
Mr. Shields, I'm checking in on the census. Have you determined who on staff is working on Falls Church in the census? I keep seeing things about Arlington setting up committees and making sure that they're fully counted, and I want to make sure we are as well.
So we have an internal working group to determine exactly how we're going to manage the census. There's a steady stream of requests that come to us from the Census Bureau just on things that we have to handle as a municipality. Getting the count thing is something that we would liaise with, but that typically is a citizen-driven effort that is coordinated directly by, you know, by groups with the Census Bureau. I think we can help them, but those are, my recollection is, is those are not typically run by the city itself. I'll check on that. We are, because of all the other things that are going on right now, we have not yet assigned this to a point of contact, and we need to do that, and I need to find out the right person who doesn't already have, like, 10 balls up in the air. So it's a bit of a challenge, but we will figure it out.
The Community Foundation of Northern Virginia is standing up groups from municipalities. They had one introduction meeting last week, and there's another one this week just to get municipalities up to speed on what's happening with the census in the area. So it would be good if you could find a person and send them there on Wednesday.
Okay. All right, anything else? If not, let's move on. We've got a busy agenda tonight. Let's move on to our second readings. Madam Clerk?
Did you have a report, Mr. Speaker?
I've got, just...
Is that on the agenda? I don't see it on the...
It's at the top of the second page.
Oh, there it is. I'm sorry, my apologies.
Three things to report, and I'll do it very briefly. First, City Hall. We will, employees will be reporting to the newly renovated and expanded City Hall on April 22. And so that is our date where we'll be unpacking boxes and getting everything set up, and then the next day, April 23, we'll be open for business. So that's a, we asked for the public to work with us on the 19th where we'll be packing. So we'll be closed on the 19th at 400 North Washington, and then unpacking on the 22nd, and then open for business again on the 23rd. And there'll be a lot of publicity about that, but we're looking forward to moving into the new City Hall. We'll also have a formal dedication on a date still to be determined, but we'll, we're getting the logistics on that figured out, but we look forward to that event as well. Two other things to report. First, it was noted earlier, the dedication for the Miller House is on April 23 at 11:30 in the morning. You should have gotten an invitation for that. If you didn't, we'll make sure you do get one, but we're looking forward to that event as well. And then lastly, on April 15, there'll be no council meeting because of spring break, but the Planning Commission is meeting that night, and there are three things of council of interest on the Planning Commission agenda. The Comprehensive Plan Chapter for Affordable Housing, the Comprehensive Plan Chapter for Natural Resources, and the Demographics Chapter. So the council will take a look at where we are with those chapters, and then we will go out with more, with a check-in with the council in the month of May, and then public feedback on the drafts that are being put together right now. So that's April 15. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions from Mr. Shields? Seeing none, let's move on now. Madam Clerk?
Yes, we have three items for public hearing tonight, and the second reading is scheduled for the next regular meeting. Would you like me to read all three of the items since they're all budget-related?
Yes.
Okay. We have TO 19-02, Ordinance Fixing and Determining the Budget of Expenditures and Revenues and Appropriating Funds for the Fiscal Year 2020. General Fund, School Operating Fund, School Community Service Fund, School Food Service Fund, Cable Access Fund, Sewer Fund, and Stormwater Fund. And we have TO 19-03, Ordinance Fixing and Determining the FY 2020 to FY 2025 Capital Improvements Program Budget and Appropriating Expenditure and Revenue Funds for the Fiscal Year 2020. And then we have TO 19-04, Ordinance Setting the Rate of Tax Levy on Real Estate for Taxure 2020 and on Personal Property, Machinery and Tools and All Other Property Segregated by Law for Local Taxation in the City of Falls Church, Virginia for Taxure 2019.
All right, thank you very much. And before we get into the meat of the action, I would like to make a statement before City Council's consideration of the FY 2020 budget items. My wife's an employee of the Falls Church City Public School Board, and therefore I'm a member of a group of three or more persons that may be affected by the FY 2019 budget. I can participate in this matter fairly objectively and in the public interest. It's probably 2020 budget.
I make the following statement before City Council's consideration of the FY 2020 budget items. I am an employee of the Falls Church City School Board, and therefore I'm a member of a group of three or more persons that may be affected by the FY 2020 budget. I can participate in this matter fairly objectively and in the public interest.
All right. Ms. Powa.
Good evening, Mayor Tarter and members of the council. Just a quick introduction, on March 11, the city manager introduced fiscal year 2020 budget, proposed a total of $99.251 million budget, which was based on the City Council's guidance that was provided in December. The budget does not propose an increase on the real estate tax rate, and both the general government and the school transfers are within the organic revenue growth projections, respectively at 2.4% for the city government and 2.5% for the schools. The budget proposes use of permit reserves to assist with increased permitting activity associated with major construction projects and the anticipated use of capital reserves for the increased debt service based on the financial plan that was presented during the high school bond referendum a couple of years ago. In addition to that proposed budget of March 11, there are a few changes that we are proposing, requesting of the council as a markup, and any other changes that the council may wish to introduce tonight. First one is, there is no longer a need for an appropriation of $16,000 for the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority administrative fee. Staff has been notified that this fee will be paid directly using the NVTA tax receipts, and we're requesting that the $16,000 appropriation is not required. Next one is a request for a match for the Transportation Demand Management, TDM, grant. This is a grant that the staff has applied for, for $40,000, requires a 25% match, $10,000. So part of the other appropriation that is not longer required, $10,000 of that would be used for this. In addition, the WOMADA Board adopted their budget on 28 March, which requires increases cities' share of the subsidy by $31,000. Staff requests appropriating the remaining $6,000 from item one that I just mentioned towards this additional WOMADA subsidy while using the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission Trust Fund to make up the difference. One more item is the addition of Contract Specialist Position, 1 FTE in Public Works Department, which has grown significantly for city maintaining city facilities, procurement of all CIP transportation, as well as all CIP major projects. This position will provide administrative support for the $15.7 million NVTA grant for the West End Campus Project, and there is no new fiscal impact on this position. It'll be funded with a combination of the operating dollars within the Public Works budget as well as the grant funds. And a new one that's not mentioned in the staff report that I'd like to bring to your attention is allocate roughly $22,000 of the 1% transient occupancy tax that is set aside for the downtown improvements, to set aside $22,000 of that for downtown parks and, downtown and parks coordinator position, part-time position that has been requested previously. So since the position will be managed within CPED's Community Planning and Economic Development Services Department, the 1% is budgeted in Public Works, so we'll be transferring within the departments, but no net increase in dollars, and also transferring $15,400 of the same pot of money for park maintenance. So with that, I conclude my report and open it for any questions. I have provided a handout based on the questions from council at the last meeting of all the positions that were requested by departments as part of their unmet needs, which total almost $1.7 million.
All right, thank you very much. Ms. Hardy, did you have a question? You look like you're teeing up your microphone.
Thank you. Yes.
Remember, tip-off is in 38 minutes.
Yes. Taken to heart the no questions request. This is actually hopefully a quick thing, because I've received a couple of citizen inquiries about this with some confusion. So in last week's news press on page nine, there's actually a city notice advertising an increase in the real estate property tax, which I think is an error, given that we had adopted at first reading not to raise it. And so several people had inquired, like, oh, I thought you guys weren't raising the rates this year. So I wanted to make sure that for the record, we notified people accordingly.
That's correct. We did get a couple of calls. So the tax rate in itself is not changing. It's the levy that's calculated differently, and we advertise the levy rate and not the tax rate. So the tax rate remains the same at 1355 for next year.
It's just assessed values that have increased.
Right.
Okay.
All right, what else we got here? All right, Mr. Shields, do you have additional presentation?
No, that's it. This is the last chance for council to discuss... This is the last chance for council to discuss the budget before action is scheduled at your meeting on April 22nd.
All right, I'm going to ask for public comment now. We, I'm sure we'll have some more discussion up here, but is there any member of the public who wishes to speak to any of the matters that were raised tonight? Any of the three items that were being heard or are being heard concurrently? Mr. Burkey, please come forward.
Mayor, City Council, my name is David Burkey. I'm the Director of Elections and General Registrar of Voters for the City of Falls Church. I'm here tonight to again request that you consider funding our half-time deputy registrar into a full-time deputy registrar. As the city grows and the city continues to turn out in record numbers, for each and every election, our workload necessitates a full-time deputy registrar. The budget of my office has been pretty consistent over the last decade that I've been here and that budget is less than half of 1% of the entire budget. Part of the reason of our ability to keep our costs steady for the last 10 years is that the Falls Church Electoral Board, the deputy registrar, and I have been able to find ways to serve our voters better while also saving the city taxpayer money. This includes reducing the number of wards that we have from five to three a few years ago. While a few voters were inconvenienced, it was a voter-centric change where most of the city received better service, faster lines, and better response times. This also meant that we saved money when switching to our new voting system. It was less, it was two less polling places that needed to be staffed and equipped. That's about $16,000 in savings every year since we normally have two elections each year. The other voter-centric cost-saving measure we initiated was moving our local city elections from May to November. Voter turnout in city elections has increased to the levels of normal elections in November from an average of about 30% to an average of at least 60%. This change saves the city between 15,000 and 20,000 every other year. This next year is going to be a busy one for us. It takes about three months to prepare for each election. We are currently building our ballot for the June 11th Democratic primaries. In-person absentee voting starts on April 26th, the same week we move back into City Hall. It would be really nice to have a full-time deputy that week. Once the next fiscal year starts, we have to get ready for three elections. There is the November 5th general election featuring Virginia Senate, House of Delegates, Commonwealth Attorney, City Council, and School Board. Four months later, we have a presidential primary election. Michael McDonald is an expert in election data that has worked for George Mason University and now works for the University of Florida. He has told election officials nationwide to get ready for the 100-year storm in the 2020 presidential election. He says it's likely to be the highest turnout election ever. Falls Church may top 90% or more. That enthusiasm will be present in the March presidential primaries. After that, we have three more months to prepare for the June 9th primaries, that is for the rest of the November 2020 presidential general election ballot. I hope you can understand now why my only request ever for a full-time deputy, as I'm the only full-time person in that office currently, just a little over a year before the likeliest, highest turnout election we've ever administered in November 2020, when we have four elections that precede it as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much and thank you for your service to our community. All right, are there questions for staff or comments? Mr. Lichtenhouse.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure when the appropriate time is for this, but we had a fairly spirited discussion last week related to tax relief and some of the options that were being presented. Ms. Bowe was just presented to us, 1.7 million dollars of unmet needs. And I want to have a conversation before it's approved and I know we will have a working session related to tax relief, so I'm not exactly sure when the appropriate time for that would be, but to look at areas of the budget, if we have money available for relief, but we still got 1.7 million dollars of unmet needs before making any decisions to any programs, I think it would warrant us having a closer look to, to address some of the needs within city staff, one of Mr. Bearcay's pointed out. So is that something that we'd want to address tonight or is that a conversation we'll have later as it relates to this budget?
Well, I mean, I guess as to relates to how we specifically, we can allocate the money for tax relief and then decide how it's to be apportioned later on. We can have the discussion now. We can start the discussion now and finish it later. I mean, we can do all those things, but I guess if you have some strong beliefs about it, you may want to present them this evening. We'll see if they get interaction with their colleagues.
Yeah, I would. I think it's important because there was a lot of coverage in the news press, there were some conversations yesterday about, or I'm sorry, last week, related to tax relief. And I think it's important for folks to, to recognize that we've got some significant challenges from a capital improvement perspective. We're pouring a lot of money into schools, the library, city hall projects, and if we have money available in the budget to fully abate taxes when we already have an existing deferral program, which in and of itself is relief, I think we need to look at some of those opportunities to address some of the needs that we have, both within city staff as well as other affordable housing options. There's been a lot of conversation around housing affordability and having a deferral program in place is a relief program. Putting off taxes until you sell a half a million dollar home is a relief program. But if we have found several hundred thousand dollars in the budget to offer as a relief when we already have an effective relief program and given the fact that we've got 1.7 million dollars in unmet needs, I think it warrants a much deeper conversation. My proposal would be, if we have money available, that we look to allocate some of that to address some of the needs within city staff because we're having a difficult time, in my opinion, keeping up with the number of projects and obligations we have as a city, but then looking to shift some of that money to offer as rent relief to address a different affordable housing issue and rent relief for those that are working for the cities and the schools. We're having issues with retention. We're having issues with keeping up with salary bands. We spend a lot of time comparing ourselves to other jurisdictions, but I think it's important for the city to understand that there are a lot of positive ways for us to consider and compare ourselves to surrounding jurisdictions. However, when it comes to tax relief, it's important for folks to realize that it is not a simple mathematic equation. It is not as simple as looking at the cost of having families with children in homes versus those that would stay in place. Virtually 70% of the property taxes that we collect in this city come from residential homes. It is not derived primarily from commercial real estate assessments. In our surrounding jurisdictions, neighboring jurisdictions, they have the benefit of drawing from much, much larger commercial base. So when it comes to addressing affordability issues, I think it would behoove council and I think it would warrant a much deeper discussion as opposed to glossing over a simple mathematical equation in terms of how we address affordable housing. There is a diversity within this community that goes beyond just focusing on relief for one section or one subset of that demographic. There are a number of families here that have reached out since our last meeting, have talked about the struggles even though they have a dual-income family of paying their property taxes. Again, we have an adequate relief program in place with deferrals, which in and of itself is a relief program, but I think it warrants us looking at affordable housing other than just simple relief. I truly do not believe, given the unmet needs that we have, the fact that we have asked our community and our citizens to shoulder the burden of some very large capital projects, that if we had found several hundred thousand dollars within a budget to offer as relief in full abatement, that we look beyond just increasing what I think is an effective relief program already in place in terms of deferrals.
All right, thank you very much. And so you do not support option three that has been discussed?
Just for the record, I support deferrals. I would even support lowering the interest rate even though the city would lose money from an inflationary perspective. I think that we have an effective relief program, which is deferrals, which defers taxes to be paid upon the sale out of the proceeds of a home. That in and of itself is relief. I would even be willing to commit to keeping the current relief program, but it's, it seems to me, not seems to me, but we do have money that we have freed up in the budget and I would recommend two things. If we've got several hundred thousand dollars, even a hundred thousand dollars that we found in the budget to expand our relief program, we either do one of two things. One, we take that money and we lower the property tax rate, even if it's a quarter of a penny for everyone in the city, or we take that money and set it aside partly to fund some of the unmet needs within city staff and partly as rent relief for city and school employees. Those would be my two options if we have money in the budget, which apparently we do to offer, to put towards affordable housing issues.
So you object to the abatement, not necessarily the deferral of taxes?
I do not object to the deferral.
But the abatement is...
To the abatement, to the abatement I do.
All right, what's the cost of that, Mr. Shields, the abatement portion?
The, the budget number that is $103,000.
For the abatement portion only?
Well, it's to fully fund all of the, the full package of option three.
So our earlier fiscal year 18 deferral budget was 282,000, to which we added 45,000 in '19 to add the tax relief and we're adding another 63,000, making it 390. So the deferral was 282 and 108 for tax relief.
I mean, everything's tax relief, in my opinion. So abatement, I think it's clear if we just talk about abatement meaning you don't have to pay it ever, right? You're, you're being, you don't have to pay that tax. A hundred, so the proposal was 140,000 of abatement, in which case people do, they never have to pay the money back versus deferral, which means they pay back when they sell, they die, their house is sold for whatever reason by their heirs. That's, that, I would consider that a deferral, I presume.
That's correct.
So what's the deferral amount and what's the abatement amount?
140,000 is the abatement amount.
Okay.
And the remaining 200,000, roughly 240, is the...
I'm looking at this chart that Ms. Acosta provided. So 140 is currently what we give out in abatements, 40 is what we give out in deferred taxes, and 100,000 for veterans. Is that correct?
So the veterans, though, isn't that prescribed by state law?
Yes.
So what are we talking about as far as discretionary abatement?
So the proposal was then, currently we pay about 140,000 a year for the abatement. We defer about 40,000 a year and the veterans' tax relief is about 100,000 a year. And the proposal, looking forward, we would increase the relief part or the abatement part to 265,000. Deferred taxes, we're saying they're going to be between 15,000 and 20,000 and then veterans' tax relief about 105,000.
So the change from the prior year is, again, what? The proposal is to increase the amount of abatement from X to Y?
From 140 to 265.
All right, so that's an increase of 125, if I do my math right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and the deferral amount is increasing from?
It's actually, it looks like it would drop, but it just depends because you don't know if we're going to, you know, if we're going to reduce that interest rate, are people, are more people going to defer? We just don't know until we do it.
Okay, so I think it's good for everyone at least to know what the facts are, what the proposal is, to have a proper discussion about it. Thank you very much.
In terms of the actual budget increase that we're asking for, so I think it was the total program in the current year is 280,000. We allocate an extra 40-some, I think, Ms. Bowe.
Forty-five.
In FY 19 and what we're requesting now is an additional 60 or so this year.
63.
Right.
To bring a total of 390,000.
Got it. Thank you.
Other questions?
If memory serves correctly, when I first was on City Council, we did a review of this program. So that was like 2014?
2014, right.
Right? And last year, when we were at budget time, that was the request of City Council to put, set that money aside that we didn't actually spend last year.
Right.
And then to do an assessment of the program to make sure we were hitting the people the most in need and we were providing for those that were the most in need in our city. And were there people that we thought weren't taking advantage of this program? So it wasn't simply a, a revenue-driving thing. It was a, are we taking care of the citizens who have lived here a long time, who are the most in need?
Right.
Who would benefit from staying in their homes for several more years?
Right.
And there's no limit, right, to how many years someone can participate?
Correct.
What's about the, do you know how many?
It's about 10 years. Once they get in the program, it's an average of 10 years. They're in the program for about 10 years.
Okay. And do some people both abate and defer?
They do, yes.
Is that, and as, if we make the program more robust, some of those people that have been deferring maybe $2,000 would now be able to abate that $2,000?
Right, right. A lot of those people would be able to abate on what we're recommending. And then some of the people, you know, they might get 75% relief and they could still abate, I mean, they could still defer the balance of those taxes.
Right.
We just don't know if they will or not, you know?
Right, right, right.
But we're hoping that they will if we drop that interest rate.
And you mentioned, so as we talked about this as part of this committee, we talked about what not only our neighbor jurisdictions, neighboring jurisdictions doing, but the entire state.
Right.
And how does Falls Church fit into what our neighbors and the rest of Virginia is doing?
Even if we adopted the proposed changes, we would be granting 100% relief to people who make $37,250 a year or less and that's the lowest of all of our surrounding jurisdictions. They're abating 100%, 50,000, 52,000, I think 45,000, but we would still be the lowest. And when you compare our program to, you know, all the other jurisdictions around the state, there are two localities that offer deferral only. They're, they're both on the, one's on the border of West Virginia and Virginia and one's on the border of North Carolina, Virginia. And everyone else offers relief only. I think there was 85 counties that offered relief only, no deferral program. And there were four that offered no tax relief of any kind. And then there was about 20-some localities that we didn't have information from, they didn't report, so.
So then my last question, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page as far as why this even was begun. There were about three or four reasons why City Council wanted to look at the relief program, abatement, and deferral combined, changing it.
Right.
And I can never, can list them all.
We wanted to make sure that we were offering, you know, what we could for our most needy citizens or the most vulnerable people in our population. We wanted to compare what we were doing to our surrounding jurisdiction and we wanted to see if we could somehow get more participation in that deferral program. And I, I think that the task group or the working group of, you know, met all three of those things. We studied all of them. And as far as, you know, increasing deferrals, we're hoping that, you know, lowering that interest rate will do that. Okay, thank you.
Did you get any empiric, was someone else had a question? Did you get any empirical data or, this is what I asked about last week, I don't know if you recall or not.
About deferrals?
About whether, in fact, when you give an abatement, whether it actually alters behavior? You know, there's studies that have been done, I'm sure these programs have been implemented throughout the United States.
Right.
In literally thousands and thousands of jurisdictions. I can't imagine if someone hasn't studied this to try to determine whether these influence behavior and if so, how. And in fact, the idea that some people put forth that if you do abatement, people will stay in their homes longer and therefore there won't be more service costs associated with, with other people. Is there any empirical data you're able to find or do you need more time?
Well, when the Arlington group studied their, you know, they did their working group, I, I have like 13 pages of, of research that I'm going to share with you. I guess I could send it right away. I don't need to work, wait until your work session, but basically, yes, it does keep people in their home longer. It's aging them in place. The research also looked at, you know, other states, not just Virginia, but states all around the country. A lot of states offer homestead exemptions, Florida, Texas, Indiana, right? Is that Illinois, sorry? Where you don't even have to apply for the program. It's just automatic and that definitely increases participation, right? If you don't have to fill out the application.
I'm not so worried about participation. I understand why people will participate. I'm wondering if it alters behavior. In other words, the fact that you give an abatement actually keeps people in their houses longer or is it just something that is nice to have and maybe it's equitable? Maybe it's appropriate?
Well, the research does show that it keeps people in their homes longer, yes, and helps them age in place.
And?
I, I don't know. I can't give you a time limit. I'd have to go back and read more closely the research, but...
Okay, well, it'd be great if you could share that with us.
I will.
I think that's helpful.
I certainly will.
Are there other, Ms. Hardy?
I had a question and then just comments. So I think tonight for budget markup, what we need to decide essentially whether we're allocating the 60,000 in this budget towards the program. In terms of finalizing the details of the program, whether it's option three or option 10, what's the timeline for that?
What's the, we're bringing it to work session when? I don't remember.
What's your drop dead date when you need an ordinance?
Well, we're taking applications right now and they're due April 15th, but as, but that will be for this calendar year because currently tax relief's on a calendar year. So that would be for the June installment.
For December.
So as far as that December installment goes, that's when it would be implemented, is what I'm thinking. And people would have to apply again. It would be a full application. So as long as we would have it by like July or August, you know, so we got, we have time in this, you know, budget.
So I'm hearing we have time to kind of work on the levers and different permutations of how tax relief program could work, whether it's increasing deferrals and making that stronger or other options like the asset limits we've looked at, the AV amount, other things.
Correct.
Okay, so I think as we look at budgets every year, I think they always reflect kind of what the community's priorities are. And so for me, when we are one of the wealthiest in the nation, the question is, are we willing to help our most vulnerable? And to me, I think, setting aside the sixty-three thousand for this year, or whatever the amount is, I think it's sixty thousand, I think it's an important signal that we are supporting our senior and our low-income population. And it's a commitment to them that socioeconomic and generational diversity is important to Falls Church. So we're making big commitments in our CIP, to make investments in our kids by building new school. I think we need to consider the other end of the spectrum as well. So I'm ready tonight to actually allocate the sixty-three. I would like to see more work with the working groups, I'd love to offer to sit down with the working group on options, so that we can make deferral more attractive, whether that's lowering the asset limit, or making deferrals for the lower-income brackets. We can certainly, it sounds like we have time in the schedule to work on that further, if that's not something that we can support right now. But I think, as a testament to the commitment we've made last year and this year, I do think it's an important step for us to set aside the money, because I think it is important for that diversity in our community.
Okay, thank you.
All right, other comments? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just concur with what Ms. Hardy said. I think it's important that the message go out, that folks here on council understand that everyone who lives in the city of Falls Church, whatever their age or income, is probably feeling some kind of a pinch, based on the expenses in their life, whether it's a senior citizen who has to pay for prescriptions and healthcare, and those sorts of, you know, concerns, or if it's a young family which is facing, you know, daycare bills before their kids even get into our school system, and the thousands of dollars. I mean, I remember those years very well, when we had young children in downtown daycare, and, you know, it was such a relief when we got out from under that, and got our kids into the public school system here, because even the after-school daycare program here was so much more affordable than the literal thousands of dollars we were spending. So, you know, we understand that across the spectrum, our taxpayers, you know, are facing some of the highest tax bills in the region, which is why, everybody knows where I'm going here, we spend so much of our time trying to bring in economic development that will enable us to generate revenues, that will help us keep the tax rate itself as level as it can be. I can't do anything about assessments, I'm not sure I want to. I mean, to some degree, we benefit, all of us, from increased assessments year after year, when we do finally get to the point that we sell our homes. But the tax rate itself is something we have control over, and this council, everybody on this council, has been responsive to the concerns that we've heard, that the city's tax rate, although I understand we're small, and not ever going to have a rate as low as the bigger counties around us, nonetheless, needs to be competitive. And it's that competitive angle that I think end up voting on this, because, as I understood what you said, even if we approve the sixty-three thousand dollars, and take into account the whole program that we dedicate to deferral and abatement, the income levels that we require here are not as generous as any jurisdiction around us.
Correct.
And I guess at some point, I'd like to hear a discussion about, why is that? I mean, in so many other respects, the city of Falls Church has a reputation for being quite compassionate, you know, the Miller House, the school system itself, the energy and resources we dedicate to public education. It is a little surprising, frankly, that our numbers, thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, which last I checked is not a lot of money to live in Northern Virginia, is our figure. And I'd like to see us have a discussion, not tonight, but down the road, about how we might become more competitive with the jurisdictions around us, who are able to serve others at somewhat higher incomes, so that, as Ms. Hardy said, generational diversity is a value that we hold dear here, I think, and we need to put our money where our mouth is.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lichtenhouse?
So I do want to raise the point again, that offering a deferral program is a relief in and of itself. And one of the statistics that Ms. Acosta presented to, presented to us last week was that the average assessed value, the average value of the homes for which you're deferring taxes are over half a million dollars, half a million dollars. And frankly, given the fact that we spend a lot of time comparing ourselves to other jurisdictions, it also warrants reminding folks that we also have the highest property tax rate of most jurisdictions in the state of Virginia. And so, given the fact that we're two square miles, most of our property taxes are driven from the property tax bills paid by homeowners in this city, it seems to me a bit tone-deaf that if we have money in the budget to lower the tax rate, or to offer rent relief to make it more affordable to the folks that are working and serving this community, and only allocating it to one specific group when there is already a viable option that exists, deferral means you do not pay your taxes. It is netted out of the proceeds of, on average, a half a million dollar home. And if you're talking ten years that we're keeping someone in place, they can choose that program. And that's just a little over seventy thousand dollars netted out of a half a million dollar asset. The jurisdictions next to West Virginia that don't offer those same programs, the value of those homes, even if folks want to sell those and use that money to live off of, are not going to come anywhere close to that. And I would also remind folks that it is the money that we put into this community that allow folks to benefit from those higher home prices when they sell. And it is my opinion that everyone should benefit as well as contribute equally. And so it is not that we are looking past those that are the most vulnerable, when we have those programs already in place to benefit them. It's that if we've got money available in the budget to reduce that burden on everyone in the community, we should take that opportunity, because we have a viable option in place, given the economics of this community. And so again, to contemplate not using that money for the benefit of the community as a whole, and I've laid out a couple different options, to me comes across as a bit tone-deaf.
All right, thank you. Other comments? Are there comments on other aspects of the budget that people would like to make at this point? Mr. Shields, Ms. Hardy?
I just wanted to ask about this unmet needs request for positions that Ms. Bowyer handed out to us, plus I think in our budget book, pages fifty-three through fifty-five or so, which I think has another two and a half million dollars of general kind of unmet things, right? Is this prioritized in some way? Because I did want to respond to Mr. Bierke's second or third request to us to fund his deputy.
These are just by department.
Got it.
These are not prioritized, but within the departments, they are prioritized, like there are five in the police departments, so those are prioritized within their department.
And so, Mr. Shields, in the budget you presented us, I think we're adding one police officer, plus two inspectors funded out of the inspections reserves, and then kind of this part-time downtown coordinator funded out of the TOT. And so I assume that below the line was Mr. Bierke's request, plus all these other things.
That is correct. With every department, there were unmet needs, so these were the positions that were unmet needs. I think in addition to this, there's another million dollars of other items, so I think it's about two-point-eight million dollars of unmet needs. And just going through the budget process, it's pretty typical, you know, these are the decisions that you have to make in putting a budget together.
So having acknowledged that, obviously, in Falls Church, we're very proud of our high turnout, and the important function of a registrar's office, I guess I would just have a concern funding that particular quest, knowing that there's all these other ones that have gone through the normal budget process, that then were deemed not to be as high of a priority. I think in general, we'd like, we'd like to hear these concerns, but I don't necessarily want to fund those who are the loudest, because I do feel like it would be incumbent on us to give everyone that same chance, an opportunity to kind of lobby it to us. So that's my position on that one.
All right, other comments about this year's budget? Mr. Shields, did you have other items you wanted guidance from us on?
No, I think that those were, we were trying to reflect back on some of the questions. We have been getting questions back to council from the work sessions we've had, and hopefully those responses have been helpful. And we do need to, you know, for the twenty-second, we'll need to prepare the budget ordinance. So if there are any items to discuss to change the numbers, it would be preferable to know those tonight, so that we're not trying to do the math from the deus on the night of.
All right.
Could I just ask a process question? I know in past years, when we passed the budget in April, fairly typical that by, you know, the end of June, we have some sort of a supplemental adjustment, things we didn't know were going to happen, extra money that we came across, is, do we expect that to be the case this year too, or are we, is there something unusual about this year that we don't expect to see something along those lines in June, late June, early July?
We did bring the second quarter in late February, and we are, since then, monitoring monthly performance of revenues and underspending on departments' budgets. What we had projected earlier, we would see roughly four hundred to five hundred thousand in revenues that could be used as one-time, if we were to continue at the same pace through the end of June. And that would be brought to council as part of the fourth-quarter report that we bring, and that would be treated as one-time money.
Okay. I agree, thank you. I agree with Ms. Hardy's views about, you know, giving everybody a fair shot at arguing their unmet needs funding requests. And there's so much going on right now in our world, that maybe this year, we haven't had quite as much time to do that as we would if we weren't finishing city hall, building a high school, doing a library, et cetera, et cetera. But I would hope going forward, that we'd have a chance, maybe later in the summer, for government operations, or maybe some combination of gov ops and budget finance to really look at, on the city side, at the unmet needs list, and, you know, begin to prioritize in our own minds how we would address that, if we had, if we had resources to do so. You know, I think we all understand that elections are very important here, and we understand Mr. Bierke has got a hard-working office. At the same time, I'm sensitive to the, I'm aware that there are other parts of city hall, there are parts of city government that I don't know as much about, and I don't see the people every day like I do see Mr. Bierke when I come to city hall. And I'd like to know more about what, even after all the years I've been on council, I'd like to know more about, you know, what their daily lives are like, what they're seeing on the ground, what they could do with another five or ten thousand dollars if they had it. So I would be open to that discussion, as, as we get some of these other big things behind us later this summer.
All right. Other comments from anyone? Is there any more discussion? Mr. C.
Just, just briefly, I think we have a pretty good budget at this point. I'm looking forward to having our new HR director, someone who I think needs to be housed in the C-suite, to take a look at this list, and to ensure that we have a city hall, a city structure that works for all of us. I'm not insensitive to the passion that the registrar brings, well, each and every time, every week we have this, this discussion, and, you know, it just seems to me that if we had some real courage here, we would take, tell Wamata to stuff it, would take their increase that they just dropped on us at the last minute, and use that to fund the deputy registrar. But of course, we don't have that kind of courage, do we? And finally, the, when we look at the tax rates of jurisdictions that are kind of close to ours, Manassas Park, for example, it's a small city, independent city, their tax rate is one-sixty-seven. So we are not the highest in Virginia. And it's unfair to compare us to Arlington or Fairfax, because they're just not like us at all. I have other examples, but I'll leave there. Thank you.
All right, thanks very much. In general, I concur with my colleagues. I do think it's a good budget. What we're discussing now are fairly minor amounts of money, which is unusual from past years in my experience in time on council. I'm very sympathetic to our registrar, it is a fantastic job, but like my colleagues, I do have some concerns about just granting requests of someone who's very articulate, who comes and speaks with us, who I think we all have firsthand knowledge with, but there are many other departments that may not have the same advantages. And so I, I think at this point, I'm hesitant to go forward on that. As to the tax relief, I understand the position with respect to abatement versus deferral, and I would like some empirical data that I've asked for before, I'd like to see what that says. But at the same time, I do respect the work of the body that has spent a fair amount of time discussing and considering this, and so I'm willing, at least this year, to go forward with their recommendation and to reevaluate afterwards. But in the meantime, I would like to get some more information about the actual behavior that these programs have engendered in the recipients. Anyway, that's what I've got. Does anyone else have anything else? All right, why don't, we're moving on next to a, let's see, we've got here next. So, do we have a motion? Is this, we're doing a motion on this today? I'm sorry. We're going to, gotcha, okay. So is there any business not on the agenda anyone would like to discuss? We do have a work session after this. Any standing regional committee, council liaison reports? All right. Council member comments that haven't been made? All right, let's go to the approval of the minutes. Mr. Duncan, do you have any thoughts?
On the minutes for, let's do Monday, April ninth, 2018, line thirteen, I believe we want Mr. Lichtenhouse being with us, not Ms. Oliver. And line two oh eight, just delete the word "was," which is superfluous. And on the back page, line four twenty-six, while I appreciate the familiarity of PD noting something, perhaps the historical record should show that I do have a full name, so that would be Mr. Duncan with those. Exactly. And this vice mayor, at line two, four twenty-four, four twenty-six, vice mayor apparently has others.
Yeah, I meant to email these two earlier, but in the same set, on line eighty-seven, this child's last name is spelled R-O-D-G-E-R-S.
I didn't know.
And then line one oh five, you refer to Ms. Bowden Meyer, but it's Baden, B-A-D-E-N. She's, it's in there two or three times. Thank you.
So those corrections, I move the amendments be approved.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Aye.
All right. Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it.
June the eleventh, 2018, one thing I noticed was on lines forty-five through fifty-five in the public comments, that Founder's Row needs to be rendered without the apostrophe. Elsewhere in the minutes, it is correct.
The Lichtenhouse-Oliver thing is on there.
Is the Lichtenhouse-Oliver situation?
Isn't it? Is that June? Oh.
No.
That was the different set.
Yes, June eleventh, 2018. Mr. Lichtenhouse is listed.
Okay.
Okay. If there's nothing else, then with those corrections, I move the amendment, the minutes of June eleventh, 2018 be approved.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Anything on the other two? Because I didn't have time really.
The ayes have it, moving on.
I defer to you.
Just, I believe on the March eleventh, 2019, you have the Oliver-Lichtenhouse thing.
Did we skip the twenty-eighth of January?
I didn't see any on the twenty-eighth of January.
No, but did we, do we not, we didn't vote on that yet?
No, we did not.
Okay. Why don't we vote on that one?
Sorry, that's the one I did not see.
All right, do we have a motion regarding the January twenty-eighth, 2019 minutes?
Move to adopt January twenty-eighth, 2019 minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it. March eleventh, we have a change. Anything else on March eleventh? All right, we have a motion.
Move to approve, March eleventh, as amended.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
All right, so now we're going to move on to a work session, which is technically different than what we've just had, which is a regular session, although in practice, it's not really that much different. But we're going to take a five-minute break anyway. So we'll be reconvening in just a few moments, so see you soon. S.E.E., we thank you all for coming out tonight. We certainly value your opinion and your insights, and this is the purpose of this, is to have a discussion, to hear your thoughts, your candid ideas about what's going on, and to move the project along. So we also have some peanut butter cookies for markup by Tina Airman, and so I'm going to pass those around. Hopefully, if you're lucky, they'll make it to you before they are all gone. I'm going to start it off, going that way? All right, so we're going to go this way. All right, so we're going to go this way. But Mr. Shields, why don't you go ahead and start the conversation with your staff's thoughts on where we are right now?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Members of the Planning Commission, members of the EDA, members of the development team who are here as well, Robin Bedderell and Evan Goldman. So here's what we'd like to do tonight. We, the Planning Commission has, with a unanimous vote, recommended approval of the special exception entitlement, but with also some comments that we're working through the process now for the final staff work to take that action to council. The comprehensive agreement is advancing. We've got a lot of work still to do on the comprehensive agreement, but we have the structure set. And so Carol McCosker is going to just do a briefing on the comprehensive agreement. And Carley will give a briefing on the special exception entitlement. We do have on the agenda the ability to go into closed session if the council wishes to discuss with the EDA and the Planning Commission, if necessary, the negotiating points that would be appropriate for closed session. But that, that's an option available to the council. So why don't we start then with the update on the special exception entitlement? And I'll just note at the outset that we do have some thoughts on the special, on the voluntary concessions that reflect all the comments from the boards and commissions. But we have not yet really engaged with the development team on changing the voluntary concessions that they have already proffered to the city. So that still is to come. But with that, I'll turn it over to Carley.
Good evening, council, and Planning Commission and EDA. The staff report for this item is brief, but it does have a lot of attachments to it. And I want to discuss the three main areas that are intended for discussion tonight. And those are the board and commission comments, the draft voluntary concessions, and the staff comments. Last Monday, on April 1, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the application. And their motion, which is in attachment one, includes several items for consideration during the special exception entitlement process, as well as the special exception site plan process. Specifically, for the special exception entitlement, the Planning Commission recommended the following elements be incorporated. Hotel massing away from the plaza, school plaza. Incorporate elements in ground floor uses to activate the Haycock Road and Leesburg Pike frontages. Incorporate placemaking and an amenity plan and other illustrative materials. And incorporate further refinement of the phasing plans, such as timing and parking tabulations by phase. As far as items to incorporate into future special exception site plan materials, they recommended that the intersection of Route 7 and Haycock Road be appropriately designed as a city gateway, including tightening of the roadway geometry, increasing pedestrian access and safety, and appropriate landscaping. A full traffic signal be considered at New Street B, which is now Mustang Alley, instead of the proposed HAWK signal. And then a parking management and transportation demand management plan that supports non-automobile modes of travel and minimizes roadway congestion. In addition to the Planning Commission, comments and questions were received from all the boards and commissions, and those are included in attachment two. Some of the highlights of those were questions and comments on improvements for transportation items, such as traffic congestion, parking. Interestingly, a lot of the comments actually were supportive of reduced and shared parking, but just making sure that it was, would have, would work for the proposed uses. Having adequate bicycle facilities and walkability and pedestrian access. Housing affordability and accessibility. Questions on, comments on program layout and uses. Specifically, some were to include more office, have sufficient separation between the schools and the economic development project, and to have the project have more of an outward focus towards Haycock and Route 7. Other questions or concerns were on height and massing, particularly the shadows on the adjacent schools and residential uses. Environmental aspects included, ensuring that sustainability aspects are included and carried forth. Increased tree canopy, sustainable landscaping, and stormwater design that includes low-impact design techniques. Incorporation of community character, false church community character, such as history, design, and also public art. And then questions on the financial agreements related to the interim agreement, such as the pilot and the CDA. In attachment three, there are a couple, well, one set of comments from Fairfax County. We did receive supplemental comments Friday afternoon, and those are included up here. And then as far as voluntary concessions, we have a draft that has some edits with staff comments, and then those will be also vetted with the board and commission comments. Some of the staff comments are in relation to stormwater, having increased stormwater than what code currently requires. Having a transportation impact study update and signal warrants, particularly for the improvements along Haycock Road, which are in the city's jurisdiction. Some affordable dwelling unit updates than what we had in previous voluntary concessions. Some urban forestry comments, particularly along Haycock Road, to provide larger canopy trees and more creative solutions for enhanced streetscape. And then some other transportation improvements. So staff review comments, some of the highlights were similar to the Planning Commission comments, so I won't go over those again. But the schedule is we're going to meet with the applicant probably this week to start discussions on the voluntary concessions. And then there'll be another work session, May 6, on the resubmission, which is estimated to happen on April 19. So I think that's, if there's any questions on that, particular comments or timing?
All right. Sorry about that.
One comment, Tim Stevens with the Planning Commission. One observation that, that I made during our review is the use of the LEED certification system. There was some, wasn't clear whether the applicant intended to use LEED for all of the components, both the residential and the commercial, or whether they were going to take advantage of the wording that's in there that refers to equivalent, and we weren't sure what that meant. Based on the recent experience that we've had with Founder's Row, the recommendation was that we stay with the LEED program. That's the easiest for the city to oversee, and it's the most comprehensive in that it covers both the commercial as well as the residential components.
All right.
I don't have anything extra.
Melissa?
No. I think that we really had quite a good discussion in all of our recommendations that were included in our vote, were particularly about the total light instead of the HAWK system.
So with respect to those recommendations, were they based on any expert advice, you know, in terms of stacking or other things? Or is that just sort of your intuitive belief that there's a traffic signal needed there, the HAWK signal isn't, should be replaced?
For safety, mainly, because it's just at that turn into the, into the site, it's very, very necessary. I know that means we're going to have two lights close by, and that's going to be a difficult situation to, you know, on motorists. But it is so important to have that upper, that's our main Mustang Alley into the site. And that, I think, is very, very important to have that. And I think that was a big discussion along that line. It was also recommended by other boards and commissions. I think CACT had it in there. And so we thought that that would be an excellent addition.
Okay. Al, as the developer, have you considered that as your traffic consultant? Done any analysis at all yet of that?
Luckily, our traffic consultant is here this evening.
Ah.
So I'm going to answer this and then maybe correct me if I'm wrong. We've not done that level of detailed analysis yet about stacking or to understand how those intersections would work with all three of the lights. We, there also are some issues in that intersection in that until we know what Virginia Tech is doing on their side of the street, it's a little hard to build out all the pedestrian walkways on all four sides. But I think it's something we are, we would do at SCE Site Plan, study that, kind of as a system, all of the lights around the property. We obviously also need to get VDOT approval for just the, what we're proposing on seven. And they may have some input on this intersection since it borders VDOT as well, but we're, we're not closed to it. We're open to considering it.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, whoops, thank you. If I might add that also one of our thinkings was with the bike lane being up on Mustang Alley, and there are no bike lanes, and the middle section road going through, that the, any of the students who were riding their bikes might best use that, go on up a little bit, and then cross over. So, because again, the bike lane situation isn't available where the other light would be.
Okay. Okay. Melissa, do you have anything?
No, I don't have anything to add. I think our comments were pretty good and pointed out our issues.
Okay. All right. Well, do we want to move on to the EDA then? Bob, do you want to maybe kick off that conversation?
I'd be happy to. Okay. Obviously, this agreement is very long and very detailed and very, very complicated. The EDA voted unanimously to support the project. There were a couple of suggestions made. I'd just like to ask a couple of questions and then have the opportunity, as we go on over the next few weeks, to send in some written comments. But one of the questions I have is, I've heard varying things about the status of our discussions with Fairfax County. Can somebody enlighten us on kind of where that stands?
Ongoing.
Or is that not a good idea?
Well, I'll, Mr. Shields, go ahead.
Thank you.
Not trying to put anybody on the spot, you understand.
Let's put Mr. Shields on the spot.
He's good at that.
Well, so we've, we've had a lot of interaction with Fairfax County, really, for over the past four years on this project. We've had stakeholder meetings, we've engaged with the planning staff, the zoning staff, and we've engaged at the political level. And so we have done, I think, all the right things to make sure that all of our partners, VDOT, Wamata, Virginia Tech, and Fairfax County are well-informed about what we're trying to do here. One of the exhibits here is the proposed subdivision of the property, and that has been discussed with the county. They do have some points of disagreement about that and how the 70/30 is being discussed. And so that is the discussion that is ongoing, and we'll work through those issues.
Is there any reason they would have anything to say about how we divide up the property 70/30, you know, without getting?
Under the agreement, it's very clear that how that, you know, what the city determines to be educational uses and which would be for commercial uses is at the sole discretion of the, of the city. And, you know, we're doing that work with the school board to make sure that, number one, we're meeting the educational mission that is first and foremost for this site. And, and having the design of the, of the economic development, the commercial piece, so that it interfaces effectively with it, so that the two function well side by side.
Okay, thank you. One other point that I'd like to make, I guess I would like to ask staff and the developer to sometime between now and when this is finalized, hopefully by May 15, that there be some focus on the community, what I'm going to call community amenities, mainly in Section 2.2.1. Don't want to get into the detail, it's not appropriate here tonight, but I think we need to make it very clear how that's, how those amenities are going to be turned over to the city. Are they built out, are they not built out? Is there rent to be charged or not? All things that we've encountered, the city has encountered in other projects, sometimes to our detriment. So I would, I would ask that staff focus particularly on those issues. That's all I've got.
Okay. Thanks. Ted, you got it?
I don't have anything to add at this point. Just here.
Okay, sounds good. All right. Mike? Really? Okay. All right, well, what else, what else, what other comments do people have? Council? Any comments from council? Questions? Thoughts?
One thing, one thing we're planning to do is, is just do an overview of the comprehensive agreement.
Okay.
And, and we can do that and just sort of, and I'll turn, turn it over to Carol for that. When we're thinking about it, what's helpful to think about is sort of the qualitative aspects of the project we're trying to address through the voluntary concessions and through the entitlements program. And then those can be refined in step two with the site plan approval. It's the business terms that we are trying to address with the comprehensive agreement. And there are business terms that are, like, right now, and probably for the next 10 years, sort of that realm of business terms, which will be in the comprehensive agreement. And then, of course, the ground lease itself is going to have a 99-year survival period. And the basic structure is to have all the business terms upfront in the comprehensive agreement and have the ground lease be a simpler document, so that people 50 years from now, when they're reading the ground lease, they're not going through all the details about capital event fees or, well, actually, that will be important. But they, yeah, take that, that's a bad example. But they won't have to go through all the details of the things that we're living right now. They can really focus on the things that need to survive over the 99-year term of the lease. So with that kind of global introduction, again, this would be before the council, for your work session on May 6, and a request for action on May 13 to authorize the execution of the comprehensive agreement. And, and so I'll turn it over to Carol to give us an overview of that.
One question of Carley. These board and commission comments, did they all come in? Are you missing a few?
No, I think we got them all.
I don't see Arts and Humanities Council here.
So their only comment actually was to correct their, oh, their only comment was to correct their name in the VCs.
Was their only comment?
I think so. I'll double-check with Cory.
Okay.
But yeah, I think that's, in the VCs, they had, the name was old.
Okay.
But I'll double-check on.
Okay. I remember, I saw an email that was going through from Barb Cram last week.
Yeah, I saw that too, actually.
Please make sure you make comment.
Because now I remember seeing some.
Yeah.
Make sure that they're in there.
And then my other question is, what happens with these comments now? How do we filter through and decide, do we make changes or not make changes? What do we do next with this document in the next 14 days?
So if there are any tonight that the council feels that should be incorporated, we'd like to hear that. And then otherwise, we'll be working with the developer to incorporate which phase it can be incorporated into. Some may not be able to be incorporated, as, as are the case with all projects, but we'll be working on that over the next, well, very shortly this week, so that they can incorporate it into the resubmission, so, because they plan on resubmitting within a couple of weeks, so.
Okay. So you'd like to hear from us?
Yes, soon.
The things really matter, the things that rise to, we must do these.
Correct.
So our developer, seems like he wants to say something.
Yeah, also, so what we've done in the SCE application, if you may recall, is we responded to any questions or issues that were raised throughout the process. There was kind of this long list of questions and answers. So we've now created the same document for all of the questions that came up, that came from planning staff, as well as all the questions that came from the boards and commissions. So in our reapplication on April 19, you'll see responses to every single issue that was raised. And then that gives, unfortunately, only three weeks, but to go through and determine, many of them we say this will be SCE site plan, or, you know, it's, it's not something we can respond to right now. But that'll give us three weeks to work through those and make sure that they're captured in the SCE approval in a way that we both agree.
So Hardy?
Great. Thank you for that, Evan, because I think our boards and commissions really accelerate their normal review process. I think they'll, they'll like being heard. Speaking of that, though, I like the chart or table on line 113 of the staff report, which compares the SCE to the IA. And for the most part, everything's improved from IA, except the civic space is now unspecified in terms of the size. Do you expect in your resubmission on 419 that we will get more clarity on that?
That's just because the civic space per the IA is included in retail. So it's, so that's all that is. It's, it was, it was always included in retail, was always assumed to be part of retail. So the unspecified in here, we've been asked to separate it out in our resubmission, so you'll see it separated out in our resubmission. So the retail will go down by 20,000, the civic will go up by 20,000. But that's, that's right out of the IA.
So if that were the case, then we wouldn't be hitting the 120,000 square foot minimum for retail, then?
Right. The 120-whatever-thousand minimum retail included the music venue and civic space, those spaces, the music venue, the music school, those are considered retail in our IA, because they're commercial spaces.
I guess I'd look to staff to see how we looked at it for the fiscal analysis, whether we counted the full 120 and then civic space on top of that, or just 100 retail and then, that matters.
We'll clarify that when we do. We'll clarify that when we do the numbers again. My recollection is that we struggled with that when we were doing the initial fiscals and we made some judgments as to what was civic and what wasn't, but we didn't have that sharp delineation, so we had to sort of exercise our judgment on it. One note that I will just make on the civic space, this is, the civic space is, is intended to stay under the control of the development team. It's not something that would become a municipal, you know, one of the city's responsibilities to program that space. That's, that's been the intent for that. So, the music venue and the music schools is what has been, you know, intended and what's been thought about, but that would not be run by the city.
I think there was a comment from the city attorney about the senior space not being considered residential, but there's also the idea that 6% of the residential would be affordable. Did we recapture the quote, "non-residential senior uses" as requiring the 6% as well?
Yeah, my recollection of the IA was that it included the, that the, the affordable housing 6% was calculated on all three of the residential uses, the multifamily, the condos, and the senior housing.
But the requirement that, I mean, I want to make sure we use the correct terminology, because if those are taken out from senior, from residential, then, for example, your definition of residential, they're not included, I believe, if I saw your comment correctly.
Well, it's simply that the, there was a maximum residential of 550,000 square feet, gross square feet, and that included the multifamily apartments and the for-sale residential or condo, 275,000 square feet of each. The 225,000 gross square feet of senior housing was called out separately, but all three of those uses are within, are counted for, for count, calculating 6%.
As long as it's clear.
Right.
I just, I thought, I didn't want to get a little too clever for our own good.
Right. No, I think we're covered on that. Make sure.
Yes, Eric.
One thing that did come up at our meeting was Phase Two.
Can I request the microphone? Thank you.
Thank you. One thing that came up at our EDA meeting was a discussion about Phase Two and what the requirements for building Phase Two would be, or what the penalties for not building Phase Two, or however it's structured legally. And before Phase Two is built, what the status of that land would be and how it might be used for some public benefit post-construction, pre-Phase Two.
What public benefit were you guys thinking about?
Well, a park was one thing that was mentioned, parking was another thing that was mentioned. There are probably other ideas, too. Those are just two that came up.
Okay.
We, that's something that, you know, we should definitely identify, because within, currently, it's stated that that area can be used for pre-construction phasing and storage of materials for Phase One while it's built, because there will be a lot of activity taking Phase One up all at once. And so, the idea, I think, the developer was planning on using Phase Two land for storage, et cetera.
Yes, and we discussed it at one of our work sessions with the planning, the planning commission work session, and the builders seemed open to making sure that area was attractive during that in-between phase, because it wouldn't help the project to have something, you know, not look, because it's, it's very visible where Phase Two is.
Yeah, that's right. Oops, sorry.
Well, in addition to that discussion, it was noted that it should not be put to use that would be so attractive that to take it away would be difficult.
Right. Yeah, so the, the intent is obviously to use it for construction staging during construction, and then upon completion of Phase One, likely use it as a parking lot. We would get that approval as part of our SE site plan, so you would be able to see what we're intending with it. And, you know, landscape buffers are, do, make it, make it more attractive than a typical parking lot. That's, you can actually go to Pike and Rose and see what they've done with their temporary parking lots, it'll be future building pads as well. But quite frankly, if there's enough parking and that's not needed, it could also just be, you know, planted as grass for a period of time. We do want to be careful not to make it a dog park or an amenity that then ends up becoming so beloved that it's hard to tear it down. That's important.
Yeah, and it's important that it's attractive. If you go over in Alexandria where the Colorado project was, on the other side of that, they have a lot of future building sites that are just horrifically ugly, kind of gravelled with pieces of concrete stuck all over the place and just really brings the whole look of the place down, why they're trying to put new buildings in there.
Mr. Lichtenhouse? And then, Mr. Navatney?
Thanks. Yeah, so there's a lot to, to digest here. Just a couple, a couple of details, Evan, on, and I guess questions. So, one of the things that I find really attractive about the Wharf, and this is probably stating the obvious, is that you've got a natural amenity there, which is water, right? And when I think about the placemaking aspect, the unique aspect of what this project is going to be, for me, it comes back to the greening of the site. Obviously, you've got, it's a good program, it's a good mix, it's next to the school, Virginia Tech, transit oriented. But I think about the landscape design and the greening of that development is incredibly important to, to really driving the uniqueness of that project. And so, one thing that I would leave you guys with, and then I'll have a lead question for you specifically, is just really doing some, something extraordinary from a green space perspective, not just the civic component in the middle, not just that kind of boulevard, but something truly remarkable, right out of the gates with more mature trees. And you guys are much more creative than, than I would ever be. But I think the greening of that site is what would really drive a really unique aspect to it. And then, I was, I was talking to some folks recently, and I was just kind of going back in my head on the latest iteration of the design that you guys had, both facade as well as step back of the massing along Haycock. And I can't recall where you guys left it, and I'm sure that that design, to some extent, aside from the densities, may change a little bit, but I want to make sure that we're very careful not to build, I'm not going to say wall, that's not appropriate, political context, not to build a fortress effectively inside of this development, because most of the development, at least when I look at it from the top down, is very inviting to metro, right? I mean, it's very open. You can tell that if you're coming out of metro, it's inviting into the project. I want to make sure that we don't shoot ourselves in the foot in terms of thinking beyond the development of this to make it inviting for what we hope to see resulting from this catalyst, which is the development of the Federal Realty site, the buyer site. And so, I just want to be careful that that massing, the way that those, the step backs are being thought of, that we make it welcoming both on Haycock and facing the other developments that are there to make sure that we get as much synergy as we can between all of those projects. Maybe you can comment on that, because I was thinking about, I thought, you know what? Yeah, it is, it's, it's pretty dense, it's pretty high, the height is right there, and it's very welcoming to the, to the metro side, but maybe you can comment on that, maybe I've, maybe that's changed.
Sure. I'm glad that was your question. I was worried when you started with the Wharf, you were going to ask that the temporary parking lot be a lake or something?
Yeah. Your stormwater needs to become a potomac. Yeah, right.
I was like, I don't know if we can bring the river here, but, great.
Trow stream.
So, so, two great points. So, landscape is going to be, I 100% agree that the landscape is going to be probably the most important feature of this development, even more so than the architecture, because it's going to be what softens the entire project, what invites people and what makes them want to come. And, and from a shade perspective, from a color perspective, from, I mean, landscape is extraordinarily important. And the nice thing about landscape is it's actually one of the less expensive construction materials you use, actually, in a project. You spend a lot of money on landscape, but relative to what you spend on concrete or other building materials, you don't. So, you can really do some great things with it. So, we'll be heavily focused on that. The placemaking and amenity plan will have sections on landscaping, and obviously, at the SE site plan, we'll get into a ton of detail on landscaping. And that does agree to caliper of trees and things like that as well, that, that weighs into that. Similarly, on the way this project addresses the city, we're in 100% agreement on that. So, once we are through this next process and we kick off concept and schematic design for the buildings themselves, we'll identify key, what's called landmark features, key site views from different, as you approach the site, from different locations. And that will help us determine kind of where the wow factor is on all the different buildings that then lets it bleed into the neighborhood and the future development around it. We'll also spend a lot of time focused on the first floor of all the buildings and what that looks and feels like from 20 feet down, which is, to me, the most important part of a building, when you're walking up against a sidewalk, how it really feels. So, all of that, you'll see at SE site plan, and we're, we're very focused on that. I don't know if you have anything to add there?
I mean, I think the one thing I would say on the landscaping piece is much in the way that the water is kind of the central draw of the Wharf. I think we see here, the commons is the central draw of this site, so we're well incentivized to make that as beautiful and as much of a beautiful place as we can, given that it's not naturally occurring.
Yeah, I was thinking even this past week with the cherry tree, cherry blossoms downtown, I was actually at the Wharf, and it's amazing just the amount of foot traffic and excitement that that creates in the region. And so, I'm not saying we would do cherry trees, but we need to do something where there's some sort of seasonal effect where people know that they want to go see the blah, blah, blah at the project, and so, we'll be really focused on all that.
Okay. Just a quick question about LEED, because Tim brought this up, because I know there was a considerable amount of effort put in towards the last minute there, related to, I think it was our RFDP towards LEED. There was a question around LEED commitments for the different uses?
Mm-hmm.
What, can you guys give feedback on that now?
Yeah, so the, so we have LEED gold commitments for everything, except for the hotel, which is LEED silver. And the, and we did ask for LEED gold or equivalent. That wasn't intended for the commercial uses, our intent on all the commercial uses is to do LEED gold. It was really intended for the wood frame residential building, where, where a equivalent might be a better measure for a wood frame building, and that's really the only building we're looking at that to be used for, a wood frame construction building where LEED, even I think USGBC, would admit that LEED gold for wood frame buildings is not necessarily the best metric to use. And so, there's other folks out there, and that has a lot to do with HVAC, which in LEED wood frame buildings, you're typically doing, you know, individual package air conditioning units for each of the units. That's just typical of construction type. And so, it's much harder to do LEED gold with that HVAC system.
All right, Mr. Navatney?
If I could just go back to the question before that on the dog park. I'm sorry, I can't let the dog park go. No, I, one thing I just want to, I want to throw out there, there's going to be 800 or 900 residential units, is that right? By final build, by final buildout. All of, all of those units are going to be, well, maybe not all of them, but a lot of those units will actually have pets. Oftentimes, in the building, you can put little, you know, kind of pet facilities in to address some pets, but ultimately, I don't know if they always take care of, you know, people that want to take their dog out and let him run and so forth. I, I'm a little worried that, you know, with those, with that kind of number of pets, you're going to have pressure on the school fields and as the only green space around. So, the schools will be forced to lock their fields, to manage it, to police it. So, I would just kind of encourage, you know, some kind of dog park facility, it doesn't have to be the full block of Phase Two, and it doesn't even have to be in Phase Two, but to the extent that this site can be programmed with a, with a dog run or some kind of ample, you know, dog park space, I think it's going to be important. I think it's going to help the schools, you know, and take the pressure off their fields.
All right. Vice Mayor Conley?
This is following to the mayor's question about affordable housing in the senior housing area. And it reminds me that when we were doing the Kensington, that was taxed differently than any other mixed-use development that we did. Does this fall under that same different kind of taxation model? Have we looked at that at all?
I have not.
Okay. We did a payment in addition to taxes. We started with a pilot payment in lieu of taxes, because it was not taxed the same way, because it was a different kind of commercial building. And then, we ended up with a payment in addition to taxes.
So, the issue is that very often, senior housing has such high deductions that their income, that they count, that establishes the assessed value of, of the property, ends up being surprisingly low. And that was the issue that we tried to address at the Kensington. What we could do is just go back and take a look and see how the Kensington is, is working. The pilot set sort of a minimum level of taxes, and if they were paying higher, then the pilot was kind of irrelevant, it just set a floor. And let me check and see what the status is, that that may have been something that we were working on, that was a situation that didn't actually appear, or maybe it did, and let me, let me get the numbers on that. But we have not addressed it in our discussions with this development.
I also think the Kensington is 100% of assisted living, right?
That's correct.
So, I think that's...
That is a big difference.
It's a big difference. So, it will be 65% independent living, and then memory care and assisted. And I also would mention, the intent on the affordable units is that it would be 6% of all the independent living units and all the residential units in the project that's in the IA. It's not 6% of the memory care and assisted living units are affordable. So, just wanted to make sure that's out there, so there's no confusion.
I would, I would just add some color to that. Part of the deduction he's talking about is that legally, state of Virginia can't tax anything other than the real estate, because of the type of facility that Kensington operates, it's considered business income because of the services. So, the rent that you pay is not just for the room itself, it goes for the services and things that would be considered non-taxable under a real estate assessment law. And so, while you look at a big, beautiful building where people pay a lot of money to stay there from a real estate assessment perspective, you're confined to some extent as to what you can tax as it relates to the actual real estate. So, the fewer services you have, the more of the income you're actually able to capture from an assessment perspective.
What we did with the Kensington project, which you may be familiar with, we actually had a special kind of taxing regime to try to capture some of that. And I don't know if we have an answer, at least at this moment, as to what method we used, but it was kind of the higher of these two methods. One would just be what you would ordinarily do, and the second would be a means to try to capture more of that, we think is the fair value of what's transpiring there. So, I guess we might say to you is to be open to considering that, and we're going to come back with some data that we have. But I think we would certainly want to capture as much tax revenue, and hopefully, you're somewhat indifferent to that, as we can.
Yeah, let's, let's go through the numbers together. The only thing we'd have to be careful of is to make sure that the, our senior housing partner, we're talking to two at this point.
Yeah, that wasn't prior to where we've been talking with...
So, we need to look and see how they underwrote taxes, to make sure that they didn't assume something different.
Okay. Other questions? Lindy?
Back to where Mr. Navatney was. I do hope that there's been enough conversation with the schools as far as the availability of fields to residents there and everything, because it, this is a very, very unusual development in the fact that it does include the school site and with all of the athletic fields that are there. And, and then also, all of the residential that is there. And so, it's, it's, it has so many different uses involved. So, I do hope that the schools have had equal, you know, time to think all this out, to see how they're going to handle it, you know, through the future, and I hope they've been working with you.
Well, coincidentally, they're here, the leadership of the schools. So, why don't you guys come up and join us at the table?
What I was going to suggest.
And why don't you, if you have any particular comments, you're certainly welcome to make them now, but having you at the table might be useful, just to purpose our conversation.
But if I just might, at the end of our meeting last time, it, it really came, the fact that this is going to be the gold standard of all future development on the West End of the city, and that this is so important to have this as, you know, the shining light, the leader of what the development is that we want. You've got the buyer land, you've got all the way down to the bridge on, and probably even all the way down to West Street, that would eventually be developed. You've got the Federal Realty that may indeed be redeveloped, and then, of course, you've got the Fairfax County redevelopment. So, hopefully, you know, that this will be that shining star that is going to bring in the very, very best in other future developments.
All right, thank you. I don't know if Mr. Noonan or Ms. Gill have any comments they'd like to make at this point.
I'll, I'll just, I'll be brief in my comments. First, I just, Mr. Mayor, city council members, thank you very much, planning commission, EDA. I want to just say thanks to the planning commission and the EDA for bringing their comments forward as part of the S E application. You know, our school board had a chance to review it as well, and I think that their comments were captured sort of in the comments of the broader context as well. You know, we, we have had ongoing conversations with Wyatt and his team, along with the developers, since the... since the inception, really, of this project. So, I think that the coordination, Ms. Hockenberry, that you're sort of alluding to has been happening. To be honest, we haven't talked about dog poop on the fields, but perhaps that's something we need to, we do need to talk about.
It's important.
Yeah, for sure. The good news is, is we're going to more turf fields than actual grass. But no, all seriousness, it is something that we do need to talk about in terms of public access to the outdoor fields at night and the walking track outside. We have continually said that we want the school to be a really powerful and strong influence for community use, and I think we stand by that. And as much as we possibly can, we want to create a circumstance where the community feels comfortable and confident coming to our schools, knowing that there will be some level of restriction in terms of what can be done at the field. We'll continue to work through that operationally.
Ms. Gill, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't think I have a lot to add. I think it will be a really big operational decision that Dr. Noonan will and his staff will work through. If there's a need to put some policies around it, I think the board will then tackle that. But Ms. Hockenberry's point is really well taken, and Mr. Navatney's as well, very well taken about the fields. I don't think that's something we had considered. So, we will look into that.
And I think along those same lines, the fact that the safety of our students going and coming from school is one of the things that we have to be most concerned about, and therefore, looking at different ways that they will be getting in and out and the times of the day that the big surges are and everything. So, you know, it's a special project.
And that we have considered, the permeability of the site in between the mixed use and the schools. We've spent a lot of time thinking about and talking about and coordinating between and among. So, that definitely has been top of our list. So, thank you for raising that.
Ms. Hardy?
So, we covered green space, dog poop, recreation. I think the other big thing, as I read through the comments and having sat through most of the board and commission meetings, is really the shadow impact on both the plaza and the schools. So, Evan, do you have any preview of what the resubmission is going to look like? Will that kind of help address a lot of the concerns we're hearing?
Yeah, so we do have a shadow, we have a more detailed shadow study that'll be submitted as part of our package on the 19th that goes earlier in the morning and later in the day. I will just remind people, at like 4:00 to 5:00 o'clock on any winter day, there's a lot of shadows because it's 4:00 to 5:00 o'clock on a winter day. It's almost sunset. So, just be mindful as you look through it. When you do a very broad analysis, if you're hitting every time of the year and every part of the year, you're going to have times that it is in shadow. So, mornings, you know, early mornings especially, winter mornings and winter evenings, even the school building is blocking, you know, is shadowing the plaza. But we have all those analyses, and we'll submit those as part of our package on April 19th. We've agreed to push the massing of the hotel building back from the plaza to help as well, both from a shadow perspective and also just from the feeling of the building up against the plaza. So, you'll see that as a condition. We haven't submitted a revised design just because, given the time constraints, we haven't really studied it yet with a hotel architect to figure out what that building's going to look like. So, instead of submitting a new design, we just have the note that says we will pull the massing back, and then we'll work with the community on that.
How far back are you talking?
So, the, once again, we don't know yet, but the idea is that, you know, probably that last, you would have, you know, that last, what is the bar today, about 50 feet that's up against the, that goes, I think it's shown five or six stories, that that bar would get pulled towards the Commons Drive.
Actually, how far back?
We've looked at versions that have it in the middle. We've looked at versions that have it closer to Commons. We haven't gotten that far yet. But you would all have the opportunity to approve that at SE site plan, so. But we've heard that comment loudly and clearly, and we're designing the hotel with that intent. The double-edged sword on that is, in order to achieve that, we have to make sure, it does limit, you know, we have, there is potentially interest from a bigger hotel. So, that's something we need to all think about at SE site plan. If the desire is to have more hotel because it's really economically beneficial for the city, we might not be able to pull it back as far. So, that's why we need to be careful at the SCE, how much we pull it back, so that we can come to all of you and say, instead of $80,000, maybe it's $120,000. So, we need some flexibility until we know who the hotel is.
Okay.
But the good news is, you get to approve it at SE site plan, so.
So, a question or two about coordination. Obviously, there's been, I think, a fair amount of coordination with Virginia Tech and Metro, et cetera. How about with federal realty and the buyer properties? I mean, especially federal realty. I mean, they're right next door. You want alignment of roads and-
Yep.
What, is there coordination ongoing? Are they kind of not really been active in this process, or what's going on?
Yeah, so I met with the president of the East Coast, Wendy Seer, about three weeks ago, and walked her through our entire proposal, everything we're doing. She shared with me some of her thoughts on, you know, what they may do over time, so that's something you guys should all talk to them about. But, you know, she was complimentary, relatively excited by what we're doing and what that could ultimately do for federal realty as well.
And so, they're comfortable with the location of proposed roads and the like for lining up for their own site?
Yeah, I mean, based on our conversation, she didn't have any issues with that, and I followed up with her after that as well. But we're also open to having a joint meeting with them, you know, whatever you guys recommend, we're happy to do.
I think that would be recommended.
And I would just note, Jim Snyder met with federal realty, I think, and Becky Witzman 10 days ago, and they had to sit down and discuss federal realty's thoughts about the future, and I think in a fair amount of detail.
I mean, the same thing with the buyer family. Right here, we're talking about 10 acres of development. Federal realty properties, what, 12, 14 acres, buyer, I don't know how many more, but you look at the tremendous benefits 10 acres can bring, how about doubling it? How about tripling it?
Right.
And, you know, as long as you can absorb it over time, you plan it well. I mean, now, to me, is the time we ought to be thinking about, you know, what comes farther down the pike? How does this work synergistically, all these pieces together, and, you know, how to provide for the long-term sustainability, economic sustainability of our community?
Yeah, we would, to the extent there's help on that, we have reached out to the buyers to meet, and have not, even though we have the same land use, company have not been able to get a meeting with them yet. But if we want, you want to do a joint meeting, we'd be happy to meet with them.
Yeah, and the Planning Commission, our next area plan is actually that area, the Gordon Triangle and the federal realty, all of that. So, you know, we've been working on the school site and everything, but now, we're going to be doing that, and hopefully, we'll be able to pull together some of the thoughts on what we can do. And our plan will obviously align with every, all the development we're doing right now.
And then, also, at the last meeting, when we approved the new buyer showroom, that is all situated so that there's going to be eventually the ability to connect with Spruce with that, you know, with having that connection with the federal realty. So, that'll be in place for a future.
Yeah, because the new showroom is actually going to move down Broad Street, and in their mind, they're freeing up land closer to the metro, which is an advantage in this plan too as well.
I mean, let me just finish this. And this is something I've said previously, and you've heard before as well, but I think along those same lines, this idea of openness, not necessarily, you know, driving in and having a great experience, but we want people to walk to this place, we want people to bike to this place, we want people having outdoor seating on Route 7, Haycock, not having to come inside to enjoy it, but actually draw them in. And somewhat different than Mosaic, which to me is really like a fortress around the exterior. Once again, and it's great, but nobody walks, there's no entrances, there's no outdoor seating along the perimeter of the property. I mean, at least to my mind, that's something that ought to be foremost in our minds, is to really create the connectivity.
Yeah, I think we've thought a lot about that, and I think the best that we can do probably is make sure that it's sort of future-proofed for that future development, because I'm not sure that we can promise that there'll be these vibrant outdoor cafes along Haycock as it is today and as it will be when this development delivers. But we've, we're definitely thinking about that future. We've talked to federal realty. We've sort of looked at it with our land use planner about how it might continue and have ideas about that. But I just want to make sure that we're clear that, I think, the best that we can offer now is making sure that there's activated uses on those ground floors and that they're planned and built such that they can convert to retail. But I'm not sure that we're going to be able to deliver, you know, a ton of vibrancy on Haycock as far as outdoor cafes right from the beginning of the project.
Well, it certainly wants you all to be planning and thinking about that, and so that, you know, as these areas evolve, they're capable of having that. So, instead of having a wall like you have the mosaic, we actually have glass transparency, high amount of transparency entrances on these streets and roads so that people can actually enter spaces set aside for outdoor seating, outdoor uses, public space along the periphery to draw people on to connect with neighboring properties. Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. For our past big developments, I wanted to ask staff, you know, we've had a list of uses that we do not want, will not allow. Just could you refresh my memory? Is that a component of this round two? And if so, does it include the new thing that we do not want, which is vape shops?
The VCs we have right now do include a list of prohibited uses. I'm allowed to check if it includes vape shops or not. Yeah, I didn't think so. Yeah, I don't think so.
That's my, courtesy of Lyndy, I have to give her credit, but courtesy of Lyndy, that is my main contribution to tonight's proceedings, because, you know, the shopping center, I mean, I'm trustful, I want to credit Bob Young for doing the Southgate Shopping Center, which is now full out without a vape shop. That's great. But, you know, yeah, we're supportive of that, but I don't know what will happen with it. I don't know what will happen with the other shopping centers, but obviously, we'd like, and if there are any other, I mean, to be reasonable, I know we don't want to prohibit any uses that we can't imagine right now, but if there's something, you know, that's out there that we're seeing that we really don't want, I mean, I know we've used, you know, the bully pulpit to try to discourage certain uses that don't generate a lot of revenue for the city and other projects. At any rate, I just trust the staff will keep that in mind. The only other question I wanted to ask, the senior living situation, 65% independent living, 35% assisted or memory care. Are you talking to folks who do like graduated care or is independent living like the building at Founder's Row, which is truly 55 and older apartments? You're talking more like a graduated care situation, so?
It's a mixture of both. So, the independent living, so the 35% that is assisted living is kind of a, you know, required meal program. You have medical, all that other stuff available to you and services that are built in.
Which sort of varies by provider, because some of them, the independent living even includes-
That's right, that's right. And we're talking to two different providers. So, one of the providers provides more additional add-on services to the independent living units than the other. So, they vary. But the idea is, you could move there and then move through the units as needed if you end up having memory issues or you end up needing assisted living. Or you could live there until you're 95 in an independent living unit with access to the services you need as needed.
But fairly, sort of more à la carte, I mean, for a minimal.
More à la carte, exactly.
Okay, well, obviously, we want to do what is financially smart pursuant to what was discussed before, but if that product could be made available, I think there is interest in the community. I hear from people who are senior, active seniors, who are not ready to go into the Kensington and have everything provided for them, but would like the fallback of the option to graduate into increasing levels of care as they live to be 100.
Okay, thanks. All right, other comments, questions? Mr. Snyder?
Thanks a lot. Thanks for everyone, for the very, very hard work that you've put into this. Thank you very much. My interest in this, first and last, is the financial return and the risk that we won't get what we think we're going to get. So, one thing that I would like is a chart that now, based upon whatever the SCE is going to be, what is the financial, what are the financial aspects, and what are the risks that we're not going to achieve that? And what are the enforcement mechanisms to minimize those risks? So, that's first and foremost, in my view, because I view that as a fundamental role of the city council. In terms of more detail, well, and let me go back to financials, because the Phase Two appears and disappears. We're going to get it, we're not going to get it. It can be residential, it can be commercial, it can be residential. That makes a huge difference in terms of the financial return, and that's an example of where I think we best serve the community if we nail as much of the financials down as we possibly can. And that, to the extent we can, we shift the risk from the developer to the city because we're taking on, obviously, a huge financial risk with regard to the school. So, those are all, and I also would like a comparison of the flow of money, when, under what circumstances, when might not, how might it not occur? And then, compare that to the second proposal that was not accepted to move forward. In terms of more specifics, I'm interested in police and fire facilities. I'd like a review again with the tallest buildings that we have in the city and maybe the reason in the immediate area. For me, it's critically important that we can assure adequate fire protection, and there will certainly be new challenges. Police, a presence for the police allocation. The historical commission has made some requests as well for space and various opportunities to celebrate our cultural and historic heritage. And finally, I think the Vipas comments are very interested, and I'll be, are very interesting, and I'll be interested in seeing a, more of a discussion about those comments. So, those were, I want to come back to the financials, though. To me, that is the fundamental concern. I appreciate, I believe that the other concerns are going to be addressed by other members of council, by boards and commissions, and I know everyone is concerned with financial, but that's my principal focus on this, for this project, because I believe that's the greatest contribution I can make as part of the overall team. So, thank you all. Again, thank you for all the time that you've put into this. You've certainly helped us make a better project.
All right, other comments? Yeah, Eric?
One thing that I didn't hear in the presentation or come up, I think, is parking, and I know there's been a lot of discussions about parking, so maybe that was intentional. But I was wondering if you could give us an update on what the latest is with the parking garage and the number of spaces and the other issues surrounding that, because some of us don't know what the latest is.
What the special exception entitlement does show is the surface parking, the structured parking garage. It has 187 spaces that are dedicated to the schools. The schools will operate and kind of basically own those spaces. The remainder of the garage would be for the commercial uses. There will be, and there is an agreement so that during surge events for the schools, the garage can be used for those events, football games or PTA events or back-to-school night and things like that. The financials on the garage is a range of value to the city with the garage option of between 4.1 and 5.3 million. The exact number has yet to be determined, but we're, that's one of the things we need to get resolved. There's a formula in the interim agreement on how that will be resolved. We think it would be better if we really closed that down so we know what that number is at comprehensive agreement. Does that answer your questions? Do you have other questions?
I guess, I don't know what I don't know, so it's hard.
Yeah, so I will say this, there is a lot of work on the garage. So, in the, in the comprehensive agreement, there'll be an exhibit relating to the garage. There will have some of the basic operations of the garage, but ultimately, those are going to come down to, with more detail, probably further down the road. But as an example, the schools are intending to use the top deck of the garage for photovoltaics to help the schools achieve net zero energy. So, in the comprehensive agreement, we want to have a basic sketch of what will those requirements be to have those PV, you know, have the steel structure to hold the photovoltaics, to make sure that everybody understands that. And so, that's something that the school's architect is providing so that that's understood at this early stage.
Thank you.
I'll just add that the parking in that garage is, would be then for the hotel, the office building, and for retail. And there is other parking, and senior living, sorry, and there is other parking for multifamily residential, so it's not the only parking for the site.
Who's responsible for the maintenance of the garage? Resurfacing, painting, capital investments? The developers paying for all that?
Yeah, so there'll be a, essentially, a restricted, reciprocal easement agreement that, I'm sorry, an REA, reciprocal easement agreement, that will govern the maintenance of the garage. The developer will fund the REA and cover the maintenance costs. There'll probably be some cost sharing with the schools for their 187 spaces for cleaning and maintaining their spaces. We haven't gotten into a lot of detail on that yet.
No, you just had that look on your face like you heard something new.
No, I look forward to that conversation.
Mike?
Apologize if it's in here already, I'm still looking through the comprehensive agreement. Public easements for roads and sidewalks, is that handled in here? Does that come later?
We, in the plat that's prepared, we have locations for public right-of-way and utility corridors. The, so, you know, we want to be as upfront about those as possible so the schools aren't surprised down the road, say, oh my goodness, I didn't realize that this easement was going to be required. So we've had those initial discussions. Those are the big ones, but there's going to be other, you know, cross easements and things like that that probably will need to come later, but maybe you...
Yeah, and the agreement is, right now, since we don't know what they are, we have to finalize our SCE site plan so we know where everything is physically, and then there'll be a reciprocal easement agreement recorded, that'll be part of our, that has to be done prior to the closing, which the closing takes place right before construction starts two years from now, and so at that point, we'll have, you know, we'll know what those spaces are, but the idea is for all the roads, all the sidewalks, everything to have public access easements on them, so that even though they're privately owned, they'll feel generally public.
And is the idea to include a middle space as well on the main boulevard?
Yeah, all the public access easement as well.
Other comments? Tim?
Yeah, I think this is probably for staff. I was just wondering what the process is on the voluntary concessions for making suggestions for changes, timeframe, and I have a couple if there's an opportunity to accept them.
We are planning to meet this week with the developer on a first draft, so if you have some, send them in anytime. I mean, they would be adopted with the SCE on May 13th or in May, so, and usually, we are working on those till the end, so.
I have what I think would be some simplifying, clarifying language on the rooftop solar energy system, and then secondly, there's some blank, fill in the blanks on electric vehicle charging stations, and I have a suggestion there, although Mr. Z may want to weigh in on that as well.
No, I think that this is a large group, and so my thinking is that we just stick to the larger issues. And so, Tim, I've looked at your suggestions, I think they're great. They increase the number of EV charging stations. If you've gone to the car show, even if you haven't, then, you know, there's a lot of interest. They almost sold me a Jaguar, so that's how much interest there is.
You only have five cars, Dan.
I only have five cars. So, but I think we just feed them to Carly, and then I'm sure there's going to be a disposition document that tells what happens to them. You're going to like all these changes, by the way.
Sure.
All right, other comments? Anything else, anybody?
If I could just mention, I'm not sure it would be useful at this point to go through the outline of the comprehensive agreement, what we sent out today, and if you don't have it, there's a stack of them there, but I tried to sort of outline where the provisions are and some of the major ones. One of the big issues right now is we do not have schedules, plans, things that are mentioned in here and mentioned in the comprehensive agreement, but we expect to get those within a day or so. We've been talking with the developers, and they've agreed that they're going to try to get them out, so that, and that's going to fill in a lot of the blanks in the agreement, but you can also see in the draft agreement, there are a number of places where questions appear. There are just a lot of discussions ongoing. One, if you, if anybody wants to do any kind of deeper dive in this, I'd suggest take this outline. It sort of follows essentially the table of contents, and so you can know where to go to in the comprehensive agreement if there's something you want to look at. There are still things, as I said, under discussion. This draft that is being handed out was last addressed by Council for the developer, so it has some provisions in there that we haven't necessarily agreed to, but there are a number of things under discussion. So if you have specific questions, I know one thing we were asked, we do have outside council working on this, it's Jeff Mitchell from Arant Fox. He's basically doing most of the drafting, and we're working with him trying to keep up with it. We have ongoing regular meetings. We have the Alvarez and Marcel people are helping with some input, and so there's a number of things in here, and I'd be happy to talk about specific things if people have questions, and I'm also happy to hear by email anybody's input, things they think we really ought to treat differently.
We've got comment from Letty, and then Mike, so.
So since we spent most of the time on the SCE while we've got the EDA here, and you guys are going to be partying to the 99-year ground lease, are there things we want to highlight and bring to the attention of the EDA that we want them to pay attention to or get their input on?
Well, I think, you know, under the structure that we're currently going forward with, we have two things. We have the comprehensive agreement, which is going to be the development deal with the city right now, and we will have before too long the form ground lease. We actually started with a ground lease that had a lot of this development stuff in it, too, and so we've separated the things. The ground lease should be a lot simpler, and as soon as we have that form, we will get that to everybody so we can all start looking at it. But it won't be, the closing on the ground lease will be in 2021. We will have a form document that should settle some of the issues as we go forward with the comprehensive agreement.
Mike?
Just following up on that, is the ground lease then intended to track the same dates that were outlined earlier, May 6 going to council and May 13 authorizing action?
The ground lease will have a form of ground lease as an attachment to the comprehensive agreement, but of course, it won't be signed, and it can be finalized before 2021, but it will, we will have a form as an attachment to this document.
So the form and substance would need to be agreed to by May 13, because that's going to be what will be signed at some point in the future?
Essentially, yes. However, it will also, I think, there is likely to be adjustments made over time. You know, we have a development that isn't finalized either, and there are a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts right now.
Mayor Tarter, my first question actually was in the same spirit of the ground lease. There's some discussion of a potential CDA at the last CDA meeting, and there's some reference in here to that as well. So my question is, what's the, and I apologize if I missed any discussion before I came in, but what's the timing on that and trying to just trying to put all the pieces together, and when will we see more on that if that is a potential vehicle or becomes a vehicle we're going to use?
I think conversation's happening fast and furious on a lot of fronts. I mean, why it is probably the best to update us on the status of that particular issue.
And I apologize, I was having a side conversation. What was the question?
CDA.
So the CDA, so the CDA, we're doing our work on that. We have a deliverable from Munichap on April, we have a date that they need to deliver their report to us on, and then we will, and what that will basically do is it will lay out the assumptions. What is the tax basis for the CDA? What is the tax rate for the CDA? How much money then will be generated by the CDA over time? And then the big question, how much debt can it support to pay for infrastructure? So that analysis will be provided to us, and we'll have sort of the basic terms for it so that we understand what it would look like, and, but that also would be something that we would then execute at a later date once we get closer to needing that money for infrastructure. So that's the plan for it.
If I could just, a quick follow-up, does that mean that something needs to be decided by May 13, whether it's just a form and substance of the CDA, or, you know, the mechanics of it, or the deal points of it, or is that something that literally can happen sometime past May 13, we can take up that discussion later?
I think the deal points will be established in the comprehensive agreement, but it will remain an option.
Vice Mayor Connolly?
And it will remain the city's option.
This one's from Ms. McCroskey, and I apologize because I don't have the CA draft in front of me, but I have a note here. Article seven.
Okay.
It talks about the timing of things and when closing will take place.
Correct.
And I'm just wondering about that timing, is that referring to January 2020, the estimated date that?
Well, the currently, yeah, and currently, you can see that there isn't a firm date. The date is tied to when the school is completed, because it's going to be when the school is completed and then we're ready to turn over the old school site. So right now, what's in there, there's an outside date, but it's a draft of August 2021. I think it's a specific date in August, and that is in the comprehensive agreement right now, but the date for the closing will actually be tied to notice that we will, the city will be giving to the developer as to when the high school is ready to be turned over, the old high school site. So that's the, it's, the timing will, there's some flexibility, and I think that the difficulty for the developer will simply be what they're planning for without knowing if the timing will be January of 2021 or June of 2021.
Okay. And do you have a preference for, I mean, clearly, the sooner the better, right?
Yeah, so the sooner the better, as long as we know about it. So the, you know, from a developer perspective, all the money we're spending upfront is coming as all equity, right? We're just spending that money, so our returns are very sensitive to spending a lot of that money upfront. So if we knew we were getting a site in 18 months, we'd go full bore crazy, get all of our approvals, get our permits, and be ready to go. What we don't want to do is spend all that money and then sit on it for seven months before we can break ground. So that's why the notice period is extremely important. The good news is with school construction, I mean, not to jinx anything, but generally, your risk is in the site work. So once your building is under construction, especially once you're closed in, you know, you feel pretty good, you can get an interior build-out done in a certain period of time. So we'll be monitoring school progress on a regular basis as well, and that will help us get more and more comfortable that they're going to actually hit that earlier delivery date, and then let us, you know, expedite permit drawings, for example. And what you'll see from us is, we're going to move immediately forward with the SCE and try to get an SCE, sorry, SESB application filed in the fall, so give us a number of months to get through schematic design and design development and then submit something. Once we have that approval, the big question is, do we spend the money on construction documents and permitting, or do we wait three to four, five, six months, depending on the timing of the school?
That's good. You good? Okay, just a point of clarification around the CDA, because there was a value attached to that CDA as part of this deal. So when we talk about deal points related to the CDA, even though the full mechanics may not have been worked out, well, we have a quantifiable formula built into the CA that dictates the ultimate value of that CDA if it's approved?
More of a binary thing rather than a graduated thing. It's a $2.5 million value to the city if we choose that option. And so I think some of the trigger points would be, will it in fact generate the debt proceeds that make it worthwhile? And that's the analysis that's being refined right now. We've, you know, there have been back-of-the-envelope calculations done on that, but what we wanted is, you know, for a more rigorous study of it.
Okay.
All right, any other questions or comments? I think this has been very useful, and our collaboration has definitely made this a better project, and we thank you all for the good work you've done. Mr. Shields, do you see that we should have or need a closed session for any kind of updates of confidential nature?
I think a very short one? In terms of that discussion, just City Council or keep everybody here? Just City Council, okay.
All right, so I think there's a possibility the City Council is going to enclose session. Thank you, EDA, thank you Planning Commission, some great work as always and great comments. Look forward to continued collaboration. Fare thee well, thanks for coming. Why don't we go into closed session, if that is the will of council, and then take a five-minute break to get the mics down? So I'm going to read a motion, see if anyone's agreeable to it. Upon a motion made by Councilmember...
Connolly.
Seconded by Councilmember...
Duncan.
And passed upon a vote by City Council, Council went into closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A8, consultation of the legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters, requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Contracts of the West Falls Church Campus Project, Councilor Connolly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Hardy.
Lichtenhouse? Snyder? Yes, okay. Z?
Yeah.
Tarter? Yep. All right, we are in closed session. It is, what time is it? 5:00. All right, let's take a five-minute break, get the cameras down, and have a quick, brief conversation in closed session. All right, we are back. So let's come out of closed session. Upon a motion made by Councilmember...
Connolly.
And seconded by Councilmember...
Hardy.
Z, Z's got it. And passed by voted City Council, Council reconvened, open session. Councilor Connolly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yeah.
Z?
Yeah.
Tarter? Yep. All right, it is, I don't know, 11 something or other?
11:38.
11:38. This is our certification. Upon a motion made by Councilmember...
Duncan.
Seconded by Councilmember...
Z.
And passed upon affirmative roll call vote in open session, it was certified that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting were convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session or meeting by the City Council. Councilor Connolly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Z?
Yes.
Tarter? Yep. All right, anything else to talk about?
Move adjourned.
Let's do it, we're adjourned. Good day.